Okay, we'll call the meeting to order, folks. Where is the clerk? Oh, there's the clerk. Well, the clerk called the roll.
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protam Weirick.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Councilmember Haney, would you lead us in the pledge?
Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have agenda review, and we've got a request. Bill, you had a request on what?
I've requested to pull H from the consent agenda.
Okay. Pulling H. I wish to pull C. C and D, I believe, if I've got them correctly. Yeah.
Moved to approve E, F.
No, wait, wait.
Is there anybody else?
We're just doing the agenda. We haven't done public communications yet, or...
Well, no. We haven't approved the agenda either. I think Randy was getting ready to help us with that.
I was just going to move the consent.
Yeah.
You can't.
All right.
C, D, and H, is there anybody else? Anything else they want pulled? Okay. Then, on reordering the agenda, the one concern I had was that that item regarding the report from staff on private large parties in residential areas, we trailed that from last meeting, and those who stayed to the tail end and didn't get to have the matter heard, we said we would bring that up early on the agenda. Is there any objection to hearing that first even before the two public hearings and just get it dealt with? Okay. So with those changes, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of...
Okay.
I didn't quite get it. Is item K2, 1K2, been pulled from the consent calendar?
I have not.
I requested it be pulled from the consent calendar for a public hearing.
Which is K2.
A parliamentary inquiry, is that pretty much the city council?
It's up to the city council whether to...
SB 35.
Yeah, SB 35, and I believe the gentleman was referring to the second part of K, the county planning appeal consideration. It's up to the council whether or not to pull something from the consent calendar, but you must take public comment on everything on the agenda which is accomplished through the general public comment period. There's your opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Again, I request that the council take a vote in whether to pull this off the agenda and set it for a full public hearing.
It's not his...
Okay. Well, thank you for your request. Comments from the council? This is regarding the general plan?
No, it's the appeal.
The appeal?
Appeal.
Oh, the appeal on the...
Right. I'm fine with it on the consent.
I am too.
Okay.
Well, since he's going to speak on it anyway, what is the difference?
Well, if we pull it from consent, then we may have a very length... An even longer night than it's going to be, whatever the council's pleasure is.
I'd rather leave it on the consent, but...
Is any...
If councilwoman wants to make a motion, we can vote on it.
No, I don't.
Okay. I see no motion to pull it from the consent calendar, but you will have an opportunity to speak anyway. Okay. Paul, you moved to approve the agenda, correct?
I did.
I got a second.
Okay. No objection? So ordered. Okay, we are now at what I consider to be a very important part of the agenda. It is not actually listed as such, but a very sad occasion for a very defined individual, and that is our good friend and fellow citizen, David Mason. And I understand, Brian, you have a presentation that you would like to...
We did.
Okay? Come on up, and let's do it. For the audience of those of you who are unaware that David Mason left us after many years of service and...
Good evening, council and community. I would just like to make a few comments regarding David. Most of you here and probably at home know David. He has been in our community for a very, very long time. I am going to read a prepared statement. Our dear... As one of David's dear friends who stopped by the museum summed it up best today, David loved his town with a passion. David Mason, otherwise known as Mr. Ojai, was our go-to guy for Ojai history. When I first came to Ojai and had questions about Ojai history, a friend of mine said that I needed to meet David Mason. He ran a flower shop in downtown Ojai, and he knew everything there was to know about Ojai. David's name came up in every conversation that I had about Ojai and its history. It wasn't until I began working at the Ojai Valley Museum in the summer of 2013 that I actually met David. It was because of David that I attended my first Historic Preservation Commission meeting. He taught me everything I know, most importantly, where to sit in the audience in the council chambers so that I was off camera. He read my initial letters to make sure that I was adequately conveying matters, and when sticky situations arose, he instructed me, "You can get more flies with honey." David was Ojai's guardian angel of our past. He advocated boldly for historic preservation through the end. He was gravely concerned over changes to the Nef Lounge at the Ojai Valley Inn, and just last month, David wrote letters advocating for historic landmarking of Ojai's Nordoff Grammar School and this very special place that we're in now, the Smith Hobson House, home to Ojai City Hall. His dear friend said, "He didn't want anyone to touch stuff that was Ojai." In addition to being our guardian angel of the past, David was Ojai's guardian angel of the present. He was a sweet soul, always impeccably dressed, and a real gentleman. The nice thing about Ojai is connections for a very long time, and most important to David was that we all got along. David loved Ojai with a passion, and he loved each and every one of us. May we hold David's love and strength in our hearts as we continue to do our work for the love of Ojai and for each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor Johnston, Commissioners Blatts, Weirick, Haney, Francina, City Manager McClary, and each of you for the opportunity to share a few things tonight. For everybody else, hello. My name is Brian Akins. I'm David Mason's straight, happily married Mormon boyfriend. I love being known as that, as I love David as my dearest friend and my BFF. My family knew David as Uncle David, and reading through his cards and messages, he was the most special Uncle David to many community people. David Mason was a private man in many ways, yet as outward loving, supporting, gracious, and caring as any one of us might want. David was born here in Ojai on July 14, 1939. His good friend through life, Bill Bowie, you may know Bill, was born the same day in Ventura because his mother happened to make it out of town. There's a current online article on the Ojai Valley News that shares moments of David's life, and they'll have a full article this Friday, as David privately predicted even when he was saying, "I don't want any attention." So, we look forward to that. David passed away Saturday night in his bed with his sister Margot, by his side and surrounded by loving friends. He died peacefully. He had received friends through the day and taken phone calls held up to his ear. Although not vocally responding, we knew he could hear each whisper of love, of gratitude. It was how he, how each of us might hope for in concluding our lives: peace and love. We, the community led by the family and the museum, will be bringing our, the ideas to discussion with the hope to put some plans in place for an upcoming community memorial celebration of David's life, and updates will be shared. As at that time, friends such as Joan Kemper, who was standing right behind me, will talk about the beautiful pergola rebuilding. We'll talk about, also talk about the development behind the arcade, the Memorial Rock, which Gil Mondriska mentioned in the memorial statement, so does the wife here. Fighting with others, stalwarts in preserving the city of Ojai, the Ojai Valley, and the county of Ventura. And as Don said, she'll be reading his words tonight. Stories of that event may be shared about David's table at Suzanne's. If you've been to lunch or dinner with David, you know what I'm talking about, about the wonderful Ojai Valley Museum where David shared his life with our community six days a week once he retired from Village Florist. David loved, loved, loved that Ojai reinvented, was presented. He loved consulting with Peter Fox and appreciated Dynamo, Joan Kemper, and others in making it happen. There's so very much that we hope to be shared in the memorial tribute and community sharing to honor this great man, brother, friend, mentor, scholastic supporter, and so many attributes. David was and is, as we are, as are we all, thankful for the community that supported him till the very end. Thankful to the Livingston Memorial Visiting Nurses Association hospice. You are angels in capital letters. Thank you for those who visited him, who sat with it even all night this last Friday. Thank you to the doctors and nurses here in the Ojai Valley and those at the VA Clinic in Oxnard. And most importantly, thank you to Deborah Mo and Julie Williams, David's neighbors. Their love and support allowed us added jeers of David's presence. Folks have asked about making a contribution. Museum hat. In David's name, I invite you to the Facebook site or webpage of the Ojai Valley Museum to remember David Mason with your donation. I know he would love that. I do know that. He set the example himself in donating in the name of lost loved ones over the years. As a wrap-up, with some loving thoughts of David, I looked at Facebook. David had a good friend, Jeannie and Pete Mack. Jeannie posted something just late this afternoon. I called her and asked her if I could share this. And this encapsulates, I think, the hundreds and hundreds of comments that have been shared on Facebook since David's passing. Jeannie says, "I miss my dear friend of 30 years. I cry not for you, sweet David, but selfishly for me. It's because I'll miss your phone calls in the middle of the night because you just woke up and you're not sure if it's day or night. It's because I'll miss when you call and tell me to hang up because you just wanted to hear Pete's voice on the recording. It's because I'll miss our fine dining, hot dog dinners. It's because I'll miss seeing you stroll in my house looking so dapper and chic and smelling so good. I'll miss asking you if your dance card isn't full. When can we have dinner? It's because I'll miss your sweet smile when you drift off and get lost in a memory. It's because I'll miss your wild stories of days gone by. It's because I'll miss sharing memories of Pete with you. It's because we needed each other when we lost Pete. It's because I'll miss your smile, the twinkle in your eyes, our private jokes and memories. It's because you, my dearest friend, are irreplaceable. So selfishly, I cry. Make sure your dance card always has a spot for me. So much love and gratitude for being so kind and letting me be a part of your life. Loving kisses." Thank you, Jeannie, for sharing those thoughts. At this time, I would like to introduce David Mason's family, who happen to be here with us, if they could stand. This is Steve Mason, David's brother, number two in pecking order. Go ahead and stand up, please. His wife, Linda, there's a method to my madness. In the middle is Margot Clark. This is David Mason's sister. She's number three in the pecking order. And pointed out, the first thing I saw her, that no, she is not David Mason's twin, no matter what he said all those years. On her left is her husband Larry, and on her right is her son Mason. So at this time, if I could, I would like the congregation and everybody, or the group and everybody to join me if you would, if you would stand, and if we could give David Mason one final standing applause at his curtain call. At this time, Steve Mason would just like to say a couple words.
Mayor Johnston, council members, and community, thank you for this opportunity to remember David. I think he's, I think he's kind of mad right now because this is not what he wanted. But he had a lot of pride, and I know he's proud right now inside. And some of the things, real quickly, I know you got a long night tonight, and I don't want to keep you going, but some of the things he was proud of, he was proud of his faith. Until he was, he became ill, he refreshed that faith every Sunday at a church here in Ojai. I don't think he ever missed. He was proud of his service. He's a veteran from United States Air Force, four years active duty. He was proud of his family. Don't do that to me. And we have more family in Arkansas, too, that couldn't make it, but hopefully they can come back when we have an additional celebration. But what he was proud of more than anything was the people of Ojai, the city, and it's the people that make up Ojai, and that was his biggest family. And he was so proud to be a member. Thank you, Brian. Thanks, Don, and all the other people that helped him. And that's all I had to say. I'm sorry, I'm kind of struggling through it, but again, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Brian. Yeah, this is a very sad time this past year. I don't know, is Joan still here? Is she... Yeah, but, you know. Hi, Joan. Joan and Pat Weinberger and Lovey Doodle, David, spent a lot of evenings in our restaurants and bars around town. And as David said, he was a historian and not a gossip. He just kept the social history of the town fresh in everyone's mind. And he did know a lot about, a lot of people for a long time. I met David in 1971 when the Village Florist was in the arcade, and the arcade was falling down, and some of the townspeople said, you know, "We got to do something. They're getting ready to move everything out onto the highway." David was one of the people that stepped up and was, if I'm not mistaken, I believe he was on the first redevelopment commission of the town that actually issued the bonds and made possible keeping what is now, you know, the iconic Ojai. So, well, thank you all for, Brian and the family, for coming down and sharing this with us. It's, like I say, a sad moment. We lost Pat this year, as well as David, the two people that were giants amongst the community when it came to looking out for Ojai. So, thank you all. Why don't we take a short intermission here, and those of you who wish to stay through the tedium of the rest of the agenda, you're welcome back, and the rest of you folks can enjoy your evening.
Can I just say something quickly?
Sure.
There are several people have recommended that we honor David, perhaps with a bench faced around the pergola. Other good ideas have been floated, and I think that we'll discuss that. Just want to assure people that we want to have a wonderful tribute to his life. And for the very few of you who may not know David Mason, if you get yourself a nice copy of the Ojai Valley Illustrated History and look him up in the index, he's all over the book. So, you can find out more about his wonderful contribution to Ojai. I also met him as a child and I remember the Village Florist. And my own father was very close to David. He kept his, had some of his landscape paintings in the florist shop, and even as my father was passing, he would ask every day, "How's Mr. Ojai?" He really loved saying that. So, thank you to the family for coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And you? And also, okay, we'll take a short recess. Back to order. For those of you who are not interested, you could take conversation outside, and we'll get on here with the meeting. We are under public comment, I believe, and I'd like to call, we have someone here from the county fair. Come on down. We'll let you take care of your business so you don't have to sit through the rest.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is James Lockwood from the Ventura County Fair, and I am pleased to announce the beginning of the 142nd Annual Ventura County Fair season. Opens August 2nd, runs through August 13th. We've got a great lineup of special concerts, free concerts, Huey Lewis and the News, Casey and the Sunshine Band, Billy Currington, Babyface. We've got a comedy show this year with Gabriel Iglesias and Fluffy Mania. It's going to be a great fair. The theme is Rooted in Tradition. To start the fair, we had a poster contest for children throughout the county. We had 42 entries this year, and I'd like to present you with the winning entry and our Ventura County Fair poster for 2016. It was designed by a 13-year-old girl from Simi Valley named Anna Sorensen, and I'd like to present you with...
That's nice.
...the fair this year. Very beautiful.
Oh, look at that.
Anna has all the children follow our theme and rooted in tradition. And welcome back to all. 13 years old. It's something kids can do. I'd like to present this to you. Invite everybody to the fair, and we're going to have a great year, and thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
And get your discount tickets ahead of time. And get your discount tickets ahead of time until August 1st. Thank you, folks, and have a great evening.
Gabriel Iglesias.
He is a funny guy.
We are now in the general public comment for items that are not on the agenda, which include items that are on the consent agenda. There was a gentleman here who wished to address that subject. Would you like to come forward, and we'll let you...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I provided a packet of information to each of the council members that was intended for your purview prior to making any kind of a decision. And it involves the material in blue paper, our correspondence that was provided to the city of Ojai last year regarding the Bentley Oil and Gas Project that, so we contacted the city three times and never received any response to this information until, of course, the item on your agenda tonight. With that, I'm merely going to say that taking an action without allowing for public testimony is a violation of the Brown Act, and that'll be the end of my testimony for tonight. If a person, a member of the public pulls something off the consent calendar, you have no option but to accept public testimony and listen to it, consider it, and then make your decision. But the action that occurred tonight is not allowed, despite the advice you just received from your council. So, if you have any questions about the Bentley Oil and Gas Project, apparently you don't have any since you've already taken an action on it.
No, we haven't taken, we have not taken an action on it.
Well, you approve the consent calendar.
Mr. ...
Okay. Then tell me what happened when I asked to have it pulled off for a public hearing.
We had several members of the council give an advance notice of which items that they were removing, and we only approved the other items. So we have taken no action now, yet.
Well, then I'll wait for the public hearing for that item.
Okay. When you say public hearing, you're talking about public comment?
You have an item on your agenda, whether the, and it says on your staff report that you're going to consider whether or not to file an appeal of the Bentley Oil and Gas Project under review by the county.
Right.
And I am waiting for the public hearing for that item, where you're going to hear public testimony and consider that testimony before you make a decision to whether to authorize your staff to file an appeal or not. So I would like to wait until that public hearing comes up, and I will be...
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to clarify the point.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney will...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item on the agenda tonight does not require a formal public hearing. That is false. The council is required to receive public comment on every item on the agenda. The opportunity for public comment on items on the consent calendar, including this item, is now. Your opportunity to speak is now. There is no other opportunity to speak on this item, and a public hearing is not required. Thank you.
Right.
Well, I see that the time is ticking down. Can I have an extra minute?
You certainly may.
All right. Well, the, as I was pointing out in the information I provided, the county of Ventura, the County Planning Division actively coordinates with cities when a project is within their sphere of influence or area of interest. In this case, the Bentley Oil Project is about 1,000 feet from the city limits of Ojai, and within... of Ojai and within the, at least, the area of interest of the city of Ojai. Thus, we provided information in December of 2015 and again in April of 2016 with a full project description. We also gave notice about the Planning Director Public Hearing recently held, and up till tonight, we've received no commentary from the city of Ojai, other than the consideration of whether to appeal it. It would have been much better if we'd heard information, we were able to change the project or address the issues prior to the holding of the Planning Director Public Hearing. The project does not involve any new wells. It does not involve an expansion of the facility. It doesn't involve any changes in truck routes. It actually involves additional limitations on the timing of trucks, that is, only during non-peak hours, and a limitation on the total number of trucks, which works out at about one truckload per day. And also the full-time use of a flare, which formerly was used only when a pipeline was down. The pipeline is gone, it's not, doesn't exist anymore, and thus the facility needs to operate with a full-time flare. That's the entirety of the project. There's no new wells, there's nine existing wells on the site, and, you know, there's nothing changing. So I'm available for any questions, and if not, I will calmly sit down.
Okay. Are there any questions? I only have one. Are you suggesting that regardless of whether the city, in a timely way, participated in the process up till now, that the decision that was made by the planning department is not appealable?
Well, the decision made by the planning director is appealable, and it's certainly within the discretion of your council to file an appeal.
Right. Okay. Fine.
I just, we just want to make sure you have accurate and complete information before, while you're considering whether to do so.
Absolutely. Well, we thank you for that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Other, let's see, I have some cards here. We've talked to James Lockwood. He's still here. Thank you for the poster for the fair. Don?
Are we still on the consent?
We're working you hard tonight.
Good evening. I would request some clarification. I would like to speak on item 1H, but my understanding is that has been pulled, so am I speaking at this time, or will there be another time for discussion, given what was just discussed?
Okay. Well, now would be a good time to discuss it, but the councilman Wyrick, pardon me, Mayor Protem Wyrick pulled the item, and we may even continue it this evening if it requires much discussion.
I would, I would have no objection to soliciting public comment when we address item 1H as a separate council item now. So I think, I think it would be appropriate for anybody interested in 1H to speak when that was up on the agenda.
Okay. That'll be up very shortly, then.
So I should hold my comments? Okay.
Thank you. I have a card here, and I cannot read the name, but if somebody-
Oh, boy.
Is there someone out there that would like to address the council that turned into blue?
Let me see.
There are no prizes for this.
I see Mo.
Is that Mo? Is that you, Mo?
You do get a prize.
I thought Mo, but I just couldn't believe it was.
Hi, Mo.
Mo to you. Good evening, council. I have a few things I'd like to say, and one of them is regarding these little cards. I have to tell you, the last time David Mason spoke at city council, he showed up at city council early, placed his card with Rhonda, the old clerk, and they called everybody except him. So they don't have an order for these cards that are handed in, and I think they need a better system. That's what, that's, okay. Also, I would like to talk about, I know that there's a low-income housing deal on the thing, and I don't want to talk about AB 35. I want to talk about the dire need for this city to have some more low-income housing. I work with seniors, indigent seniors, that are being displaced, and there's no low-income housing, hardly. So I think it's just a really, really imperative thing to present. Also, I would like, I addressed this council a while ago when I was taking a teenager on a driving lesson, and in front of us was one of Ojai's finest sheriffs who wasn't using their blinker. Now, this is a real problem in this town. Blinkers have become obsolete, just about. In the last, I'd say, month, I've counted thirteen times that I've been behind an Ojai police or a sheriff making a turn that doesn't use their blinkers. Now, I haven't had any kids with me, but I'm a big kid, so shame, shame. Also, I would like to thank, of all things, Mr. Grant, Mr. Greg Grant, for his quick response to fixing potholes. We know that our streets are in dire need, and the solution hasn't been passed to pave or not depave or whatever, but if there's a hole in this town that you clunk-clunk, or, you know, I've seen a kid hit one on a bicycle on Upper Ventura Street, and I made the call, and I'll tell you what, I am just really impressed at the expediency that he has put forth in fixing these. And other than that, I hope everybody has a wonderful whatever.
Thank you, Mo. Dennis Leary.
Should have been up in that chair, isn't it, right?
Yeah, I should have given you a warning on that, Dennis.
Yeah, okay, yeah, right. Anyway, good evening, hope you're all doing well. I wanted to talk about the things I like about Ojai. And I've got four of them listed here, so we'll see. But I had to start with David Mason, because I was born in the same year as he was. I came here to Ojai, I guess, first of twelve years ago or so, and I ran for election in 2006. And I remember being in that thrift shop, talking to David. I was naive and strange and so, but he was a kind man. And the lady said, well, he said, you know, "You catch more with honey." Well, he didn't say that to me, and maybe he should have. So, yeah, so, hi there, Dave. Hope you're happy. The other thing I wanted to mention was the CCC, the Community Care Center. I was there today, visiting a friend, and he had a bad accident, he got the pelvis injuries, and broke a leg. What was interesting was that I was there myself, a year and a half, two years ago. I broke the, you know, the neck of the femur, the largest bone in your body, and I was in that very same room as he is now. And I see that they're going to build a new one, which I think is great. I just want to kind of plug it, because, you know, there are some things in Ojai that are really, really nice, and now, community hospitals is one of them. I don't, wouldn't mind be, you know, hiking down to Ventura or farther. It's so convenient, and that day I got an injury, some guys came along, I fell on a swing, bang, hit my hip. They put me on a plywood board, tucked me in the back of a pickup, drove me to the hospital. I got great care. I was operated on that evening. Everything's gone fine, so, you know, great, we got a great thing there. The other thing I want to say is, I was checking on your website today to see about the meeting, and I was impressed with the website, the quality of the website, I think, was really great. And I found out, like, news items, that you had an item there on the power outage. I was in Rainbow Bridge this morning, and, you know, lights started dim, and I thought, what the hell's going on? And they said, well, there's a power outage, you know, it's covering things up and all that. But I got to, you know, on your website, you got to get me information, so from now on, I'm going to use you as a newspaper. Then I was in, this is the last one here. Okay, so I got thirty six, okay. I was in the thrift shop today. How do you like my new shirt? Thrift shop.
Very nice.
It's a little big, but I don't care, I don't care.
It's really nice.
Thanks for shopping Ojai.
Yeah. Shop Ojai, shop Ojai, folks. I mean, you get the greatest deals, I'm looking at the time here, because I want to use every second here. Fifteen, okay. So, anyway, yeah, it looks okay, right?
Yeah.
Got a haircut today, another thing, haircut, looks pretty good, right? You know, this lady does a good job. So five, four, three, two, one, stop.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dennis, one clarification. That wasn't the community hospital that picked you up on a piece of plywood and threw you in the back of a pickup truck, was it?
No, it was four guys.
Oh, four, just four?
Where I live.
Oh, four good citizens, right?
Four good citizens. I hollered, I couldn't move, I couldn't move at all. I was laying flat on the ground.
Okay.
I hollered for help, a lady came, and then they got four guys, and they got, you know, half of them.
Okay. They're just, you know, good citizenship. I'm glad to hear that. I'll let the hospital know that we-
I saved a thousand dollars on an ambulance. You gotta beat that.
Okay. Thank you. I have no more cards, so that takes us.
I wasn't going to talk, but, because I thought it was too mundane after that wonderful presentation about David, so, but, my name is Elise DePoyt, I'm from Ojai. And I'm one of the Ojai Valley Museum's historical walking tour docents, and I take visitors and locals around the downtown area and probably show them off our town and our history. And now, this question may end up being for staff, but we have, in the downtown area, there's a particular, a lot of standards that are applied with the signs and how the buildings look and how the height of them and what kind of shops are there and everything else. And I just wondered, is there any recourse that the city can take to the Ojai Valley Cleaners on the corner of Montgomery and Ojai Avenue? It is one of our, it's not declared a historic building, but it is the, one of the first service stations in town that was built in 1922, and it's just in such disrepair and looks so terrible. And I'm just embarrassed every time I take people there and didn't know if there was any recourse for trying to stimulate the tenants of the business to improve their property.
Public comment?
Hmm? Oh, you can't answer?
Yeah, during the public comment, we can't engage in that.
Okay, well, that's my issue, and if you think of something to reply, then I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Better comment for the oil, Lisa and Mr. Baca spoke of, but I realize that's not discussion, so I'd like to comment now, if I can, public comment.
Is that something that we can take up when we?
Pass through Mr. Baca's public comment.
Yeah. Everybody going now? I know we could do it now, or we could do it in the-
Yes, now, yes.
Now is good.
It's on the item that was, that was not pulled, so I would recommend taking it now.
Yeah.
Okay. Correct.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Michael Shapiro, Ojai. I just wanted to comment, it's interesting that Mr. Baca was lecturing you all on procedure and what you could or what you couldn't do, and that you were claiming that he wasn't noticed or something like that. Not too long ago, actually a week or so ago, there was a hearing that, in the county, on the Renaissance Petroleum Project down in Oxnard, that Sea Frog was known to be an interested party, and of course, we were never noticed. Thank God that we heard through the grapevine, we were show up, we did show up and perform valuable testimony. My experience in all the years I've been in the county, whether it's gravel trucks, whether it's oil, anything that is for the benefit of Ojai, Mr. Baca has been against. That's been my experience. The preponderance of overwhelming evidence over and over again, I don't have enough fingers to count hearings and appeal hearings that we've lodged where he's been our adversary. He's been our adversary every single time, as Ms. Prilhart has been as well, and I understand our city manager's had a few conversations with her today.
Michael, I ask you not to use the name, just stay with the topic.
So that's it. Okay. So I resented his comments tonight. I wish he was here to hear mine, because he wants more oil to be established, more projects here in the Ojai Valley, as many as he can. That's his agenda. He's an oil man, that's what he does. He's a dogger guy, division of oil and gas and geothermal, that's what he does, and I'm sure that by what I heard tonight, you appreciate that as well. So thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Well, it is unfortunate if agencies do send notices to other agencies like the city, and we don't get in early, but that does not forfeit our right to still be considered when it comes to our attention, so, thank you, Michael.
Mayor Johnston, I'll make a motion on the consent calendar items that have not been pulled. That's an order?
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we let remain items one-
Randy, do you all remain?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Did you want to go?
You get to second it.
I'm fine, I'll second.
If I correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we left on the consent calendar items 1A, B, E, F, G, I, J, and K. Now, if that's correct, I'll move approval.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion moved, seconded. Any discussion? If not, without, is there any objection to?
Mr. Mayor, one comment before, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
Just three quick clarifications. One is note on items 1E and 1F that you'll be approving the revised recommendations in the supplemental report, having reflected the bid opening results. And then on item K, subitem 2, the stated recommendations of whether to authorize and direct the manager to file an appeal, we understand the approval would be to direct that filing of that appeal.
That's a good point.
You're considering and approving it.
Understood in my motion.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no further clarification or questions, roll call.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Item C in the agenda are the minutes of July 11th, and I would ask that the minutes be corrected on page 111, 1-11. I am recorded as having voted "I," and I voted "no" on that particular issue. That is my only change, and with that, I would move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any objection? If not, so ordered. Okay, now, the next item is the accessory dwelling unit, and I pulled that off just to, I won't say I'll make one last plea, but I do want to make clear the risk that we are taking. I appreciate all the hard work that was done at the Planning Commission and our desire to try to provide affordable units, but our current emergency ordinance has virtually turned every residential property in town into a potential duplex, which is good, I mean, in the sense of creating more dwelling units. But I hope I'm wrong, particularly if I can't get someone to want to reconsider this, but the larger the house, the less, or the more expensive the rent, and the smaller the lot, the more potential congestion and crowding. But in both cases, it will increase the value of the real estate from an investment standpoint. And what concerns me is that, as they train them in the military, it's easier to change a "no" to a "yes" than a "yes" to a "no." And what we have before us on second reading is to expand beyond what the state law requires, and I would really encourage us not to do that until we've had some experience with this, because once we do it, I'm not sure what the taking or inverse condemnation rules would apply, but to then change the zone going back the other way after people have invested in properties with one understanding, I think is problematic. And the second point I would make is, is that it was mentioned that the height of the building from the Planning Commission was, I think, something like fifteen feet, and it was suggested that it would be better to have it consistent with the existing ordinance at twenty-five feet.
Twenty-four.
Or twenty-four. And I did support that, but I, in thinking it over, the Planning Commission may have, even though no one stepped forward to tell us this, but my, it's possible then to create two-story buildings instead of one-story affordable units. So, anyway, I'm just bringing that up one more time- that up one more time before we move on this, so, I don't know if anybody agrees with me, but, for the record, I have stated it, that is, I would encourage us to use the minimum lot size for eligibility, and to have a lower number, a twelve-hundred-square-foot home is, in many neighborhoods, a fairly nice-sized luxury home, not an accessory unit.
I have a question of the city attorney.
Sue?
If I want to reconsider my vote, I, or, and I would ask that you amend the size to at least six-fifty if I do reconsider my vote, how do I do that?
The vehicle would be to make a motion to adopt the ordinance with those amendments.
Okay, okay, so currently, the ordinance allows for twelve-hundred square feet, and I went home and I measured my own house, which is eight-hundred-and-fifty, and I think that's very adequate for an ADU, even on a large lot, and I wonder if my fellow council members would consider a compromise, perhaps you think six-hundred square feet is too small, but would you consider how large twelve-hundred square feet is, it does seem, and I've agonized over this, I watched the Planning Commission hearings again, and I've spoken individually with one, one or two Planning Commission, you know, had question, further questions, because this is a very serious move that we're making, so I guess what I'm asking, is there any support for a compromise, not, no two stories, and not, and less, I mean, why are we doing more than the state is asking?
We could later do that, after we've had a little bit of experience, that's kind of the...
Yeah, the thing that, that makes me want to reconsider is Mayor Johnnie's point, that once we allow for this, for the twelve-hundred square foot, if the buyer, because whoever purchases, purchases real estate will have that understanding, and then we can't go backwards, is that correct? We can't say-
It'd be difficult with some, some exposure, but normally what happens, you end up with some kind of an abatement process.
And the council would retain the power to change the rules in the future.
Yeah.
Those that were built would be, would be subject to non-conforming rules, but there'd be no guaranteed right to build if you bought under a certain set of rules, and the rules are later changed, and you haven't built anything, there's no right to zoning to exist as it does now, that may assuage some of the concerns that are expressed.
Right.
The other comment I would make is that this ordinance requires a design review permit for two-story, no matter what height.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I, you, go ahead. Mayor, I just, you know, because I did comment to you after the meeting, I do understand the six-hundred and the seven-hundred-and-fifty and the six, I understand smaller sometimes is going to be better, again, I have a room addition on my house that's six-hundred square feet, and it maximized that lot, so, I understand that, my concern going into this is, we've had twenty-one of these in five years, and they've all been accessory dwellings, and I haven't seen a soul in this community technically start building twelve-hundred-square-foot room additions, or twelve-hundred-square-foot ADUs, I think the majority of what's going to take place in the community are going to be accessory dwellings, something that's existing, that they're going to try and convert, whether it's a garage, whether it's a, let's say, a gazebo, or a pool cabana, something of that nature, so I'm, that's where my gut goes, is, I don't have a sense that, that we're going to get over-built, however, I do, I do hear your concern, and I hear Susan's concern regarding the size, I do hear that.
Well, I'm not thinking so much as over-built, as the pressure it'll put on the property, the cost of real estate that's already expensive, Paul?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the reason why I voted as, as it's written, is because I truly believe we need smaller units, but, the lot size is going to dictate the size of the unit that you can put on it, and if we have a minimum lot size, then we're guaranteed that there aren't going to be any real small units, because the, the coverage and the footprints are going to be big enough to build whatever we allow maximum for, so, if we have a minimum lot size and twelve-hundred square feet, we're going to get twelve-hundred-square-foot buildings, but that eliminates all of the smaller lot sizes, that only can have maybe a four-hundred, or five-hundred, or six-hundred-square-foot accessory dwelling, and those are what we really need.
Well...
Okay, so that is, I have to admit, that's still a point of confusion for me, there's two issues, I, I too want people who have a small lot to be able to build a small unit, how does going, going below twelve-hundred square feet, an impact, why would that impact that? It just seems like it would be, we're, we're erring on the side of caution to not go so, if you're, maybe it doesn't matter to us, but if you happen to be the unfortunate neighbor living next door, and somebody builds a twelve-hundred-square-foot second unit, and possibly gets approval for two, you know, then it's going to matter, so, I don't fully understand, low...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Bill.
The structure is to have, first of all, a ratio to the size of the primary unit-
Yes.
That limits.
Yes.
And we further define and limited second lot coverage, so I think that those limit the size, unless you have a large lot, and up to a maximum of twelve-hundred, small lot, small primary unit is going to limit it below twelve-hundred, in the structure of what's before us, and I think Paul's point is that, Councilman Blatts's point is that if we have a minimum lot size, then you're in effect eliminating the ability of building smaller units.
Can we separate the two points?
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of passing it as is, so I, you know, I'm just putting my cards on the table.
Okay, so is it possible to keep the minimum lot size, but just have a motion to lower the, the square footage?
The ordinance that's presently on the dais does not have a minimum lot size, that was eliminated by the council previously.
And my suggestion had been, you know, going to Paul's point, and I agree with him when he says that, you know, if you allow twelve-hundred-square-foot houses, they're all going to, or they're most likely going to be built on the larger lots, and that is why I was suggesting that we say, in order to design, you know, affordable by design, we say, you know, six-hundred, seven-hundred square foot, or feet in a, an accessory unit, and, you know, that caps it, even if you've got a big lot, you can still only have an affordable unit on the bag, and if you have a minimum lot size, you are not further congesting neighborhoods, if you go into the center of town and look at the number of cars parked on the street, because people have already converted garages into places for people to live, out of necessity, even though the law didn't provide for it before, and then think about what's going to happen when you can't require parking off-street for any of these lots, I mean, it's not going to make it good for those people who don't want to put an accessory unit on, and have no place to park on their street, so, I was just hoping we would go slowly, not that we wouldn't end up in the same place eventually, after we have some experience, but, jumping in and going ahead of where the state has required us to go, just seems like we're doing it to ourselves, rather than an outside agency forcing it upon us, so, anyway, so, you had a motion, is there a second to the motion?
I don't think I made my motion clear yet.
Okay, could you, could you state your motion?
The only thing that I, I would, the only thing I would amend to the current motion that passed would be simply to lower the, the square footage, to, I mean, I would even go to eight-fifty, but no more, to me, that seems plenty, and twelve-hundred seems way too much.
Do you have a motion?
I would like it to be smaller, but I want to get support.
You get to make the motion.
That's my motion.
And your motion is what?
To...
How many square feet, and a...
I don't know if I'll get any support, but...
Make your motion, we can always amend it.
Eight-hundred-and-fifty, that's what I live in, so I feel good about that, it's a small house.
Okay, I would, yeah, okay, moved and seconded, okay, city, Mr. City Attorney, you have some concerns where this is going?
I just missed who the second was.
The what?
I just, oh, thank you, and then that would be to set the minimum lot size, the minimum unit, pardon me, maximum unit size at eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet, or fifty percent of the existing habitable area of the legal primary unit, whichever is smaller?
Correct, my understanding of the motion is, the only thing it changes is twelve-fifty goes to eight-fifty.
Thank you.
Everything else remains the same.
Twelve-hundred.
Twelve-hundred.
Twelve-hundred goes to eight-fifty.
Eight-fifty.
Okay.
It's not perfect, but to me, that seems more prudent.
Okay, other comments? If not, call the roll?
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Hmm, I'm going to say no.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
No.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Are you sure you don't want to reconsider?
Yeah.
Excuse me, I have a point of order.
Yeah, yes, clerk?
I have a point of order, are we going to be allowed public comment at all on this item?
Were any cards submitted? Were any cards submitted? If not...
I submitted a card.
I submitted a card.
Oh, okay, you are.
Then take the cards before the next vote. It was consent, yeah.
One D?
No, we pulled the other.
Good heavens, yeah.
Now we got four or five cards.
Oh, we...
I'm sure that's...
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Francis, you're already on your feet?
Yep. One of them is a lawyer, so we should do it. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for your service, as always, I appreciate you, so, I want to start off with an apology, I misspoke at the last meeting, and about limiting the size of the units, and I hope to clear up my misstatement in my comments tonight, so, here we go, as proposed, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance goes far beyond what is required by the state mandate, if not changed to appreciably, appreciably limit the size of units to six-hundred square feet, this ordinance will allow many properties to have second homes with as many as three bedrooms, by their very nature, medium and large-sized second homes will not meet the need of affordability in Ojai, with the Ojai Tourism Improvement District, a council majority was far out of sync with the overwhelming majority of the community that did not want it, with the OTID, the council missed an opportunity to poll the community to gain an understanding of how people felt, I suspect the council majority may be missing this opportunity again, this is the largest change in Ojai zoning rules in decades, I encourage you to make a serious effort to find out how the community feels about the changes to our zoning rules that are not mandated by the state, before approving this ordinance, thank you.
Did I not put my name there?
I don't have a name, okay, fine.
Oh, gosh, sorry about that.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Sabrina Venskus of Venskus and Associates, I live in Ojai, love it here, been here about ten years, this is a really special community, and we really have to hold on tight to this community, there are hundreds of Southern California cities that are all about growth at any expense, ram it down our throats, to hell with the environment and quality of life, Ojai is special, it's extraordinary, and it's, it's so easy to lose, I represent communities, community organizations, and individuals all over the state, mostly Southern California, in really trying to preserve the environment and the quality of life, and I've litigated a lot of SEQA cases, and it is such a battle in most other cities, it's so disempowering and depressing, because the city, most city councils, in my experience in Southern California, don't give one, one hoot about the environment and, and the, the quality of life, but this city is so different, and it's so, it's so inspiring to come to these council meetings and hear y'all, listen to the community, and grapple with issues, you know, and not get on your cell phone and text, or turn around and talk to people, I mean, you really pay attention, and it's really inspiring, I really want to encourage you to please, please make amendment to this ordinance, I'm so concerned about this opening the floodgates potentially to incredible growth in this city, I understand the state is trying to ram down their agendas, down everybody else's throats, but we're a special city, and we really need to treat it that way, I, I watched the city attorney and his explanation on why this ordinance is exempt from SEQA, and as a, somebody that's litigated a number of SEQA cases, I, I was, I was totally confused about the explanation, I didn't understand it, this is one of the, this ordinance will be one of the most major upzonings in, in, at least since I've lived here, probably more decades, and it deserves the environmental review that is required under SEQA, this, this ordinance is not exempt, but even if it was, why would you not want to know the environmental impacts of your decisions? Again, this is one of the most significant upzonings, a major change of upzoning in Ojai in probably decades, so, even if you could exempt the ordinance from SEQA, why would you? What kind of city are we that we would not elect to conduct an environmental review, know what the environmental impacts of our actions are, and then identify mitigation measures, or feasible alternatives to lessen those impacts, that's the kind of city we are, we want, we should know and want to know what we're doing, and what kind of impacts we have, and you have the discretion to say, hey, we want to do environmental review on this, because it does exceed the state minimum standards, it's therefore not exempt, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, okay, so, we're back where we started, Ryan?
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
And I'm going to make a motion because this is something that has been extensively discussed at the city council before, it's at the Planning Commission multiple times, and, again, I more or less respect the Planning Commission grappling with this, and coming up with what they felt was a middle ground, and I know that people on the Planning Commission are as concerned about the environmental quality of this community as anybody, and they feel, again, that there is a balance here between, how do we address the changing nature of housing, we are, you know, been in a position of, of reduced household size by average, increased numbers of multi-generational housing experiences more or less becoming the norm, the, the inherent affordability of having more housing units on an existing piece of land, when land is the most expensive component of housing in Southern California, and the fact that the, the opposite of sprawl is well-designed infill, that's just a axiom of urban planning, and so, with all of that, and given all the discussion that we've had on this, and the Planning Commission has had for hours and hours on this, I'm going to move to approve item one D, second reading and adoption of the ordinance, amending Ojai municipal code, et cetera.
Okay, we have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
I just want to remind the council that the Planning Commission was not unanimous, you know, they were, they, I watched them, I was present when they grappled, and they raised the same questions that, you know, those of us with questions are raising, that's just food for thought, thank you.
Okay, well, if there's no further comment, clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
No. Okay, now, what do we have left, Bill?
Mayor, if you'll allow me to continue?
Sure, did we have one more?
I pulled item number one H.
Okay.
Because it involves a recommendation from our staff to extend a package of permits that dates back to 2009, and I have some real concerns that are, and in fact, really stem from the admission in the staff report, that the setback standards have changed since this original permit package was put together back in, in 2009, that the reason for entitlements to have... to have a time limit is precisely to avoid having entitlements extend as community, beyond stages of community development. We have had changes in state law with regard to cultural resources. We have had changes in the, sort of, the norms in terms of the planning commission. We have had, as stated here, changes and setbacks from '09. And on top of that, I objected. The other reason for entitlements having limits is that we should not, you know, there should be a, entitlements are meant to get something done, not to simply to be attached to the land and continue forever as part of the, a package of characteristics of the land. And so, with that, given my reading of the situation and for purposes of moving things along, I'm gonna move to deny the time extension for design review permit, DRP 06-14, et cetera, in 1H.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Is there a second to that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
And then we have public comment.
Before public comment, yeah.
Okay, we do have public comment. I've got a card from Brian, and I think, Don, you wanted to talk on this. I've got something here that, but doesn't have a, it says 1E. Is there somebody out there that wanted to talk on? This is not 1E, but I don't know where I'm getting these cards from, but it's out of order, so if there's no one, okay, good.
Round H.
Mayor, yield my time to Don.
No, but she's welcome. Come on up, Don.
Let me start by saying that Julie Tumamait Stensley, who is the tribal chair of the, our local tribe, the Barbarania Venturania Band of Mission Indians, as well as her brother, Patrick Tumamait, also a tribal member, are unable to be here this evening, and I would like to request some additional time to comment on this project. May or may I have additional time to provide comment?
Tonight?
Yes.
Well, how much additional time?
I'll take six minutes if I could do that. If not, I would like to request that Brian yield me his time.
Okay, proceed.
Okay, thank you. You're receiving two handouts before you. One is a copy of my comments, and the second is the public notice that went in the Ojai Valley News on July 14th stating that this would be a public hearing. Just to give you an overview, I have two major issues with the project before you. One is related to procedural issues, and the second, as Councilmember Wyrick referred to, are changes in legal and environmental conditions. There are new laws in place and new information is available that requires additional study. Regarding the procedural issues, before you is the public hearing notice that appeared in the Friday, July 14th, 2017, Ojai Valley Newspaper, that says that there will be a public hearing on this item. What was listed on your calendar was a consent calendar item. So, again, I would request that there be a public hearing. My second point is that this is a project under SEQA. A mitigated negative declaration was adopted by council in May 2009. The purpose of SEQA is to allow for public participation in the decision-making process. Information should be available to allow the public to review and comment prior to approval, yet the project listed tonight was for your approval as a consent item. The third question I have is what actually is before you to be approved? Because absent from the administrative report are the actual permits, DRP 614, TPM 02, NT 0632. There are no meeting minutes from discussions of those. There is no environmental review document. There's no link to mitigated negative declaration, nor are there even the conditions of approval that you're being asked to consider tonight before you. As a result, I do understand from the administrative report that there's monitoring, but I don't know if that's going to be by an archaeologist, by a Native American, or both. There are also standard conditions to halt work, discovery, and human remains. I don't know if those are included. So, my second point is that there are changes to the legal and environmental conditions. Regarding the legal, this project was approved eight years ago. On July 1st, 2015, approximately two years ago, AB 52 was adopted, creating a new category under SEQA of environmental impact for what's known as tribal cultural resources. This project was not reviewed under the current existing laws and community standards that are in place today. My second point is regarding the environmental conditions. Cultural resources for this project were reviewed in March 2007, 10 years ago. New information regarding cultural resources is available. This information has been provided to each one of you. Further study is needed to avoid or mitigate potential damage to cultural resources. In short, circumstances have changed. New information is available. On behalf of Julie Tumamait Stensley, tribal chair of the Barbarania Venturania Band of Mission Indians, we are requesting, one, that an extended Phase 1 archaeological study with subsurface testing prior to any other earth-disturbing activities be conducted. Testing should include an updated literature search, at least five to 10 shovel test pits, and presence of a Native American Schumash monitor during testing. In the event that resources are encountered, procedures for encountering cultural resources should be followed. The second request is that the project conditions include monitoring during construction by an archaeologist and a Native American Schumash monitor, and secondly, that standard work halt conditions in the event of discovery of archaeological materials or human remains be put in place. The way I see it, you have four options at your discretion and with advisement from your city attorney. One would be to continue this item and direct staff to provide the above-referenced missing documents from the package, the project description, mitigated neg deck, and conditions of approval to allow you to make an informed decision and to allow for meaningful public participation as required under state law. Your second option would be to require additional environmental study prior to approval of a time extension. Third option, it would be to approve the time extension with additional condition of approval requiring additional environmental study. Fourth option would be to deny the time extension. I'd like to call your attention to Ojai Municipal Code, Section 10-2.3203 regarding time extensions. I've paraphrased from here, so it's not exactly specific, but it's specific to cultural resources and what we're discussing here. An extension for approval of an entitlement may only be granted if there are findings that there have been no significant change in the local regulations or the character of the area within which the subject property is located that would cause the approved entitlement to be injurious to the general welfare. Therefore, please require additional environmental study to identify resources and ensure appropriate conditions of approval as highlighted above to avoid or mitigate potentially significant adverse environmental impacts of this project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only cards I have, so. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick points. One is the section cited, 10-23203, subsection A.2, requires that if the matter subject to extension originally required a notice public hearing, the director provide notice. It doesn't directly require a public hearing, so the noticing that was done was done appropriately and that doesn't force a public hearing. Of course, at the moment, you are taking public comment, so all the requirements of a public hearing are met, even if one is required by some other section of code. And then, on the second one, the findings were adequately paraphrased by Ms. Teeding, and that's the choice firmly in your hands. Do you find that the, there have been no significant changes in the general plan, the zoning regulations, the OJ code, or the character of the area such that approving the extension would be injurious to the public's convenience, health, safety, or general welfare?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, I believe the motion is option four to deny. That's my motion.
I think the applicant's here.
The applicant's here.
I believe the applicant is here. If he wishes to speak, we recommend doing so.
Thank you, council. I'm sorry for not, can you get that out?
Yes, I can. Pardon me. Scott Smigel, I am the applicant here, and I apologize for not filling out the card. I thought it was a consent, or I guess it is a consent item, and I didn't realize it was going to be pulled. I urge you to consider this, not, I understand, councilman, you're the general spirit of not extending entitlements because of the possibility that conditions have changed and requirements have changed. I urge the council to look at this as a particular project. To the extent that we need to do additional environmental or other, you know, satisfy other conditions of council or of planning is understandable, expected, understood, and we would accept those conditions. Pardon me. Prior to the approval, we have five or six years of work, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and the delays have not been willy-nilly. Frankly, the most recent delays have been because of the interest in the neighbor in developing the property, which would frankly make this conversation moot. That appears to be going, as I said in my application, too slowly. And here we are. Things have come full circle, and in fact, those negotiations have gone too slowly so that we've apparently missed our window to start the project, and I'm here now asking for the extension. So, if you need to, I urge you not to deny the, our application for extension. If you choose to impose additional conditions, I understand and respect it, or if you choose to continue the matter so that the staff can more fully flesh this out, I, at this point, welcome that. I would have, an hour ago, said that would be very disappointing, but now that would be a victory. So, rather than just shutting it down, please consider those other options. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Have I missed anybody else who? Okay. Paul?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Summers. There's certain limitations that we have when we're extending a entitlement such as a variance or whatever. We have to have, we have to have findings to be able to support whatever our decision is. What is the situation with an extension of time on a project that it looks has been extended twice before? It was approved in 2009, which is eight years ago. What is the, what is the standard that we have to come up with in order to meet the threshold of being able to extend it?
The standard remains the same. The prior extensions, of which there were actually four, two by the council and two automatically by state law that are just straight automatic. The council has to find that good cause exists for the extension and that the extension wouldn't be, leave the project in violation of a chain, significant change in the general plan, the zoning code, the municipal code, nor would otherwise create harm to the general public welfare, to paraphrase.
Okay.
And so, in other words, to add another comment, if the council finds that this situation under which the project was approved is largely the same as is presently true and that the applicant has demonstrated good cause for the delays, then you could vote, reasonably vote to extend it. If you find, however, that there has been a significant change in one or more applicable city laws or regulations and/or that the applicant hasn't made adequate progress, then you can deny it. It is discretionary.
Other comments or questions?
I just, I didn't hear a number three, and that was the reconditioning of the project to meet the new city standards regarding lot setback, regarding AB 52, regarding our additional paw requirements, and any other cultural and historical impacts that might be presented today that were not presented in 2009. Is that part of something that we can do?
Yes. You also have the power to impose conditions as part of the expansion, the extension.
Okay.
Well, then it seems prudent to impose those conditions and, under those conditions, grant the one-year extension.
I'm not withdrawing my motion.
Okay. Well, the question is, what, what?
I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, do we have, what, is there something in here? Maybe I just didn't read it, that explain why it's taken eight years?
That's one of the, that's one of the issues that I have, Mr. Mayor, is that the reason that it hasn't been, the development hasn't proceeded is because the art center was interested in buying it. Well, it seems to me, if we've given an approval for a project, we expect that project to move forward expeditiously, and it hasn't moved forward expeditiously because the person who has the entitlement may not want to do it. And in fact, if somebody had bought it, they wouldn't be doing it. So, I don't, I don't see the good cause here, to tell you the truth.
And I just want to say that the setback issue is significant. In fact, the staff report indicates that having current setback standards would probably instigate a complete redesign, and that means, you know, a new design review permit. So, I just, because of this, you know, this and other significant changes, what Mr. Blatz says, I'm continuing with my motion.
Other questions from the council?
Councilmember Blatz, you were on the council when this first came.
No, I wasn't on the council. It was approved in 2009, as I recall. It had been, it came before the council for an extension.
Okay.
While I was on the council.
So, if we don't grant the extension, can we still address the concerns that Dawn raised?
Well, we're moved.
We're moved.
Then it goes back to square one.
Excuse me?
They have to start all over, and then all of the things that we have in place have to be.
If you don't grant the extension, you go back to square one?
Yes, to reset.
Okay, all right. I'm just going to listen to what else you have to say. Thank you.
Dan?
Okay. Any other? Okay, if there's no further discussion, we call the roll?
Mayor Protam Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
This is a real difficult one, because I understand the extent of the money that this gentleman has spent in the past, and I think that offering him the opportunity to recommit would benefit the community. So, for that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say no.
Okay. Motion passes. Is that the end of the consent agenda?
Yes.
I think we set a new record for consent.
Yep. It was a good one.
Yeah, okay. We are now on, what, item number two? This is the signed ordinance. Considering all that we have on here, is this, yeah, this, I would suggest, can I open the hearing and then take a motion to continue this item?
Certainly. We also...
Here, the city manager's looking puzzled.
Well, I think the city chairman and I were gonna make the same comment. I thought we understood it when the order of the agenda was approved, that council wanted to take up the residential zoning matter as the first discussion item.
Right, you are correct.
So, that's the look of my public.
Okay. Okay, those of you who are out there on, which item? Was that item number six or five?
Six, okay. All right.
Okay, we are on item number six. Subject is the consideration of a potential residential special events permit. We have a staff report or just a summary?
Yes, very briefly. Again, this was, this was requested by council to come back so that there could be a discussion by council in order to give some direction to staff. We did our best to try to bring up some points that the council could consider if they wanted to go this route and give some direction to staff. So, again, the recommendation would be to receive public comment and consider directing staff to prepare an amendment to the zoning ordinance to regulate special events in residential zones.
And any questions or comments from the council? Okay, let's see, we, see if these are filed.
Well, isn't the person who put this on the agenda going to explain the thinking, or will that come later?
No. Staff put this on the agenda.
We're happy to provide further explanations.
Staff, didn't, somebody, but somebody had a, no one directed staff to put this on the agenda?
There was a, there was a question raised as to how we ended up in a situation with a, what appeared to be a commercial venue, which was disputed by the property owner, saying that they weren't... that they weren't doing it commercially, they just had a lot of friends and family that they were inviting to their property. And so I believe it was council, Mayor Protem Wyrick, who suggested maybe there was something that could be done to simplify the process. I'm not sure this is what he had in mind when they-
No, I'd be happy to comment, but I thought we were gonna take public-
Well, okay, yeah.
...hear from the public first, but.
Yeah. Should we, should we go ahead and have public comment first?
Yes.
I've got, this is number five. How are these being stuck in here? Nobody is on number six? I'm not finding, is there anyone in the audience that wants to comment on number six? Maybe that's why I'm not finding it. Okay.
Mayor Johnston?
No, I, I, Christine, I'm not soliciting. We're okay with not having comment, I just didn't want to miss anybody.
This is on the party thing, right? Can't have a party? Am I on the right one?
There you are.
So I just have some questions about it. If I have a party to celebrate my 73rd birthday and I invite 60 people but only 45 show, do I get my money back?
There, there's no proposal at the moment.
There's no proposal at the moment? So that thing that was up on Facebook is moot?
There's no proposal in front of council right now.
Okay, that's good.
A happy 73rd.
I'm done, because I had some other questions, too.
You expect to be invited.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Bill, take it away.
Mayor Johnston, I want to just lay the, lay the groundwork on why this came up for consideration. It came up because in October 24th, 2016, a resident filed a formal code compliance complaint, and staff, I think, felt like didn't have the tools to deal with it. The first response of staff was to say that, well, they don't have a CUP. And I'm just reading the timeline here, and I'm just trying to boil it down to the essential item where the, the issue became multiple events, some people complaining about what neighbors are doing, other neighbors feeling like they were doing family events, they were just happened to be chained closely together. And the only staff response, you know, apparently was, well, maybe, you know, you should have a CUP, or we have to determine what's commercial and not commercial, and if it's commercial, you need a CUP. And if you know anything about CUPs, they're just a big pain. I mean, you're talking planning commission, you're talking money, you're talking time. And so the issue becomes if, you know, if you're trying to decide what's an accessory activity to residential use, which is allowed, and what's non-necessary because it's commercial, became something that I view as staff just didn't know how to deal with it, didn't have the tools to deal with it. And I want to remind everybody that the way that the county has determined that short-term rentals are just fine until the Board of Supervisors acts again, is that short-term rentals, in other words, commercial use of residential properties, single-family residential properties, was quote-unquote "from" the staff at county planning and accessory use. So this idea of what accessory use is, is problematical and less defined. And our job, when a problem is brought to us for, for consideration, is like, how do we think about dealing with this? How do we deal with the pressures of commercializing residential property versus the rights of people to have, enjoy and, and the quiet use and the private use as a true accessory use? And how, and what tools are there for the staff to try to distinguish? And a CUP is not it, in my considered opinion. And so I did raise the issue, is there another way that we might provide a way of thinking through a tool here in terms of dealing with the kinds of change and pressures that our residential neighborhoods are facing with respect to commercialized use or non-commercialized use, there are people complaining about each other and, and staff not having the tools to deal with it. And so my thought was that we ought to look at this, and again, there is no proposal on the table except if we want it looked at further, we send it to the planning commission. And that's what I'm gonna make a motion to do, to send this issue to the planning commission for consideration.
Any more comments? I, my take on this is, this is something that we've had a tendency to do most recently, is take little issues and blow them up into big issues. And this, to me, is just a group of citizens that need to figure out how to talk to one another and solve their differences together. So I would not support sending this any further down the road. In fact, I'd support that we figure out how to shut this down tonight.
I, I support that as well, and, and I understand the motivation behind it after you explain it. In an ideal world, perhaps that could be done, but I've received probably over 50 letters and not a single one of them supported regulating beyond, everyone seems to, people stated clearly that they felt that our current noise and traffic ordinances should take care of this, and also the zone, if zoning is residential, then you cannot have commercial activities, it's as simple as that. And I realize there's a blurry line, and so, well, you know, but I don't think that this is the way to have that blurry line.
I, I tend to agree with Councilwoman Francina and Councilman Haney. You know, it seems like we're making an awful big thing out of this, and it's kind of like government putting a regulation in place, and all of a sudden, it turns into this monster that, how do you control it? There's been a lot of, a lot of communication to us, and I pay attention very closely to the communication we get from the community, but it seems to me that as, in, in the civility of a town like Ojai, we ought to be able to take care of this out in the community, and we certainly don't need another regulation that gives staff a tool to go out and pit a neighbor against a neighbor. Just, it doesn't make any sense to me. I'm for just saying, there's no reason for us to spend any more time discussing this.
Well, I, too, received a lot of correspondence on the subject from both extremes of our community when they say neighbor against neighbor, and I've told this joke before, but I'm reminded of the southern politician who, on the stump running for office, said, you know, he says, "Some of my supporters refer this and some of my supporters are against it. And if you will vote to send me to DC, I will stand behind my supporters." And every, yeah, and everybody, Chuck, I never had an opportunity before to stand behind all of my supporters regardless of what they thought, so I would concur with Paul and that I think we ought to see if we can do this in a civil way. I think that the, the staff are necessary. I'll go talk to some of the neighbors if they're abusing it, you know, and say, come on, you know, everybody doesn't have a wedding every weekend, you know, or maybe you got too many friends, but you need to keep it down, because it's just like other issues. As long as you're not irritating your neighbors, most of us can get along. If you are irritating your neighbors, it's gonna end up with, you know, Bill was trying to address a problem, and it is a problem, but I would say we should give it a chance to solve itself first, and if it doesn't, it may be back like many other things on our agenda, so.
If I just for lack of a second, forget it.
Mayor, the, the other thing, too, is, is we do need to recognize exactly what, what Councilman Wyrick was trying to do, and that was, an issue had been brought to staff and staff wasn't 100, 100% sure as to what to do. So the best thing that staff could do would bring it to us, and we, and we ask for that. And, and I also want to thank all the members of the community that weighed in one way or the other. It brought a lot of attention to this issue, and I think because there was so much attention brought to the issue, it, everybody's gonna be very aware of it, and I think that that's just gonna take care of it.
I hope you're right.
I hope so, too, but I, I have a lot of faith in the community.
I know you're a rotarian, but you sound like an optimist tonight.
I think it has raised the awareness that we really need to be more considerate of our neighbors. The right thing to do is always go to your neighbor before you have a party. Go to your neighbor and explain what's going to happen and try to deal with it before you have the party rather than afterwards.
Or at least invite, or at least invite your neighbor.
Yeah.
You know, if they turn you down, that's another story, that's another, you know.
Yeah, some of my neighbors actually did that. They grew up and down the street handing out flyers inviting us to their party.
Okay, so we're done with that?
So, okay, so, but it was, it was a good effort, and I'm sorry the staff had to go to all that trouble, but I appreciate what Councilman Wyrick was trying to accomplish, and I think we gotta keep an eye on it because it's probably not gonna go away entirely. Okay, are we on number three?
Mm-hmm.
And that is, is that a public hearing?
Number two.
Number two.
Sign ordinance.
That's right. This is the new math. We don't go away, one, two, three, we, okay. Okay, our sign ordinance is now, the city attorney sent out a errata or a, I'm not quite sure what it was on the red line, but my suggestion is, is that because this is a longstanding law and we're trying to get it right, that we not try to do that tonight with all the other things on the agenda. Would it be-
I can second that.
Would it be an order, Mr. City Attorney, if I open the hearing and then continue the hearing so we don't have to publish it again? Is that-
Yes, that would be the appropriate, open and continue to a date certain, perhaps the next meeting on August 8th. You may also see if there's anyone here who wishes to speak, if they want to speak tonight, or they can hold their comments till next time.
Okay, well, our, our intention is going to be to open up the hearing and then to continue it, but if somebody can't make it later and wants to talk tonight, they're welcome to, so. I won't say, wait a minute. Christine, I'm not, not welcome. Okay, the hearing is now open on item number two, which is the city's sign ordinance.
Can I have a, just assurance from the city attorney and, and probably the people that are impacted might want to be assured that if we continue this, it's under the, there's no fines, nothing's changing, it's just, everything is in place that we passed.
That's up to us as a policy thing, and I would say, yes, everything stays just the way it is until we, you know, act on this. Nobody should be disadvantaged because of the length of time it's taking to do this.
And I might suggest-
Agreed.
If I can do this now, this ordinance is, I think, almost 40 years old, from 1970s.
Portions of it, yeah.
Yeah, so, and whatever we decide is going to probably be in effect possibly for decades to come if the planet continues. And so it requires, you know, some thoughtfulness, and it may even require a special workshop. If our agenda continues to be so busy, if we're just as busy August 8th, maybe we'll need to do a special workshop or something. So that's my thinking.
Up to the council.
Right. And I would say at the pace we move, it could be two decades, right? Yeah, okay. Do we have a motion for a continuance?
Yeah, you made one.
And I seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any objection to the continuation? Steve?
Just a quick clarification, the, the date that you'd like to continue to.
Do you have anything that shows what the August 8th looks like?
Um, it's pretty full.
Yeah.
It depends on how much we might continue as well from this agenda, and then-
Is there any, any problem with continuing it to the first meeting after our August break?
Nope, we could put it on September 12th.
Okay, that's, okay.
Okay.
That's good.
That allows whoever is benefiting from the sandwich board on our property is, continues to do so.
You can still continue.
Okay, very good.
But do, do-
And in some cases, on their own property.
But they can still make comments if you want.
We already did that.
Oh.
Right. Okay.
The public hearing is open?
Yeah, the public hearing was open, yeah. And, and again, if there's anybody who is dying, dying to comment tonight, I would recommend taking their comments, if not, continue it.
Is anyone dying to comment? Not you, Christine, but-
No one's dying. Any sandwiches out there?
Okay. Okay, if there's no objection, this matter is continued to the first meeting in September.
Okay.
Okay, next item. Item number three, Ojai Trolley Fair and Service Modifications. Do we open the hearing or do we, you know, we do that first? No, we, do we, the staff report first?
Uh, yeah, I think the staff report would be first, so.
Oh, there he is.
Mr. Grant, if you could present the item, please?
He's like a magician.
He's got a screen.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, at the last council meeting, I think there were, I'm sorry, it's two meetings ago, this topic was discussed. Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Grant, just wanted to note that we do have the translator here in case that we had anybody who needed assistance with the Spanish translation.
There's headsets available also that people can wear so you can hear the translation, right? Okay. Going once. Feel free to interrupt if you need-
And if you want to make that announcement in Spanish, you're more than welcome to.
Yeah. Okay, so to continue, at the last meeting, I'm sorry, two meetings ago, we discussed this topic, and council authorized staff to go out and do public outreach regarding Ojai Trolley Fair and Service Modifications in order to meet some new regulations that VCTC is enforcing for the State Transit Development Act funding. And staff did go out, and we had three public meetings. We did outreach through websites on the trolley, advertising in the newspaper, and we had meetings on nighttime, nighttime during the week, nighttime, I'm sorry, nighttime on a Wednesday, a daytime on Thursday, and then on a Saturday as well. So we did a fairly extensive outreach effort, and also the transit supervisor, Austin Nostrup, is here, and he went out and met with Whispering Oaks. They have a monthly meeting out there with quite a bit of their residents, and they met out there and discussed this as well. So we went through the outreach, we went through the various proposals to modify fares and the trolley service, and I'll quickly run through this on the slides very quickly. I know, just the fare box recovery ratio was the issue that we had. We have an existing 10% fare box recovery ratio, and we're being required to go to 20%, and that's difficult for us to achieve. So it's an efficiency ratio that's used by transit agencies across the country, and this requires that we reduce expenses and increase fare box revenues. This was a little origin and destination study that, that Austin went through, and it shows in the color coding where the hotspots are on our routes. It basically confirms that the routing we have is a fairly reasonable approach to serve the county as well as the city where the trolley goes. We've got our fares, these are the, the current fares are almost half from full cash fares, and then we, our next brigger segments come from ADA medical as well as the full day pass and all these smaller categories that we have.
Mr. Grant, if I could just interrupt for one sec, Mr. Mayor. If we were to make a contribution to the trolley from the, from the general fund, can that go towards the fare ratio?
Yes. The options to improve this fare box recovery ratio we're talking about, where you could not change the service at all, and I think that's somewhat what Councilman Blatz is talking about. If we took that route, it would be an approximately $80,000 loss in funding, keeping in mind we split the fund, all expenses with the county, so it'd be approximately a $40,000 hit to the general fund for the city and 40,000 from the county. If we increased fare box ratio, I'm sorry, increased fare box, the fares for the trolley as well as reduce expenses, items two and three, which is the option number four, that's what staff had proposed when we did the outreach for, is to increase fares as well as reduce expenses. So we'll cover that briefly here in a minute, but the other options were to kind of look for regulatory relief, other route guarantees, advertising on the trolleys and that kind of thing. So completed, completed outreach efforts I mentioned. We did get quite a few comments through social media, this trolley website, phone calls directly to the trolley supervisor, as well as at the outreach meetings. And those comments essentially were, a lot of people expressed support of the trolley. They really appreciate the trolley and the half an hour headway or servicing that we have for the trolley. There are some people certainly concerned about increasing the fares, going from a dollar to a dollar fifty is a hardship for some people. The service reduction was minimal impact, but there were a few people that had concerns about that. We're really just talking about trimming the very early and very late hours that we get minimal ridership on. There was the stop relocation consideration out at Whispering Oaks, where right now we turn into Whispering Oaks, go all the way down the driveway, and it's a very tight corner to make on the, on the end. A lot of times there's service vehicles parked down there, and the trolley has to do, has to either back down the whole driveway across speed humps, and it's a fairly unsafe situation. to either back down the whole driveway across speed humps and it's a fairly unsafe situation. But that area is, pretty high speeds coming into town or leaving towns, a lot of cars accelerate as well. And so, the safety of the crosswalk, even with the improved crosswalk, which the council just approved earlier tonight and the consent agenda is underway, will still be questionable for some of the residents. And so, based on that, staff is no longer proposing to modify the service out in that area. So, those were the recap of the comments. The recap on the fare increases are all there and they're in the report as well. I think they've been discussed. And then the reduction in service, the yellow on the right is the proposed changes. So, Monday through Friday, instead of starting at five thirty in the AM, we'll start at six thirty in the morning. So, it's only an hour later start and then our finish, instead of nine thirty, would be at eight PM. And on the weekends, we would standardize service for both Saturday and Sunday from seven AM to eight PM. Really are getting minimal ridership on those very early and late hours in the range of zero to four riders. The proposed changes will help the operating costs for the trolley. Instead of the eight hundred thirty-four thousand we're spending now, it should reduce to about seven ninety-three. And the revenues should increase from seventy-seven thousand to a hundred and seven thousand, so approximately thirty thousand increase. And that FRR, the acronym there, is the fare box recovery ratio, the goal, we're trying to get to twenty percent. So, we still don't make it to twenty, we get to fourteen, so it's an improvement. And based on that improvement, we're having assurances from VCTC and other agencies that they'll do everything possible. If we're showing, we're doing what we can to improve that fare box recovery ratio, they're going to do everything they can to help support us to eliminate that general fund contribution we're going to be forced to make. And as a reminder, that doesn't occur for two whole years from now. It's not this fiscal year or next. It occurs in two fiscal years out. So, I think that was the basic recap of what we want to present and at this point, the recommendations are, on the ministry report, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff?
I just had one question. Greg, matching funds, it seems like the, half of the service that we provide is outside of the city. And how much is the county reimbursing us for that service?
After all of the expenses are paid with the grant monies we receive, the city and the county pay half and half. And that's based on how much miles are in the county or the city, which is half and half?
Okay.
Did you have, I regret that I didn't attend your, the meetings, I kept trying, but did you come to any, we talked about a pass, making it easier. Is that in the works?
And it's, we put it in the report and we did, we're working with VCTC and it's very likely that we'll be having the magnetic strip card installed in the trolleys within the next eight months?
I would say, optimistically, yes.
Eight months?
Right, optimistically, eight, whatever, within the next year, very likely.
Okay, well, looking at the trolley service, you know, from various perspectives, first of all, it is a hardship. The reality is there are people who do not have the fifty cents extra, okay? I used to be one of those people. We used to, we, as a child, we used public transportation. So, that is counterproductive because those are the very people that we want to serve. So, we have to find some way, whether it's a pass that one of our other, you know, we have, my, my mind is blank, we have organizations in town that help people get on their feet. They could provide a pass. I bet you the community would contribute because the, this is a real social justice issue. There are people who depend on the trolley to get to work, you know, they shouldn't be, it's necessary. We start by acknowledging that. Also, there's a connection between our ability to have accessory dwelling units and having the trolley running. So, that's great because that means we, we have double motivation to keep the trolley running. And that's all I have off the top of my head, but I feel very strongly that if there are people who cannot afford, you know, that we have some, something, if we're going to raise these rates, I, you know, there has to be some creative way where they, these people that could not ride the trolley could still get a pass. You know, I'm adamant about that.
I was going to mention, we do have the tokens that you can purchase at reduced, when you purchase in quantity, you can get a twenty percent discount, but it's possible that they're already taking advantage of that, right?
That's the problem with being poor, you can never buy things in...
Right, go from, if you're taking advantage of that discount, it's eighty cents now and it'll go to a dollar twenty. Still an increase.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Mr. Mayor, I, there's no question of how important the trolley is to our, our community and I, like Councilwoman Francina, hate to see fare increases to try to support the trolley. With that being said, I don't think that I like the idea of us having to put general funds in there as well. But I was, I brought this forward to the council about seven years ago and I still think it ought to be considered. I think we should consider sponsorships for the outside of the trolley. I think we could make up that deficit plus more. I think if they're tastefully done, I think we can, there's hardly a transit system in the country and they call it advertising. I think we should call it sponsorships. And I think that if there are enough, there's enough community-minded businesses in town or organizations, which I think with tastefully done artwork, could provide a substantial amount of revenues to the trolley system. And I really think that we ought to start exploring that. It's too valuable a resource to our community to burden our citizens with increases when I really think that there's another opportunity here to generate revenue. And I think in Ojai, you know, you always hate to see, you know, pure advertising on the outside of a bus, even though the, the Gold Coast Transit System buses that come to town have advertising all over the outside of them. But I think that in Ojai, if we had a very strong guideline on the type of sponsorships that could be on the outside of the trolley, I think we would generate enough revenues to make up this deficit without necessarily having to increase the fares.
What happened when you proposed it seven years ago?
It didn't, at that time, it, there wasn't a sense of urgency for it and it just kind of fell. It never, it never gained any traction.
All right, I really like that idea. What about if you have a fare box sign that says, "These are the fares," or, and then you put underneath, "Or whatever you can afford?" Because there are people who will just, and there's nothing wrong, you don't have to have change if you want to ride the trolley for fun with your grandchild.
Okay, I'm going to cut in here. This is, you know, we're now sort of becoming a workshop rather than a public hearing on the thing. Those are good ideas, but any questions of staff as opposed to giving them more of our ideas? I have one question.
We can certainly look into, even if we, I want to highlight that, you know, we're still only getting to fourteen or fifteen percent. We're still pretty far from that twenty percent, so we could, if we initiated this, and I probably didn't emphasize this enough, that we're trying to match the Gold Coast Transit District fares. So, it's common to have this level of fares. We're standardizing what they have across the board for all these fares. So, if we went to these fares and we could still pursue, for instance, advertising, maybe we'd still move towards the twenty percent.
What is the ridership? Total numbers?
Total number is, it's a great backup slide that I was hoping you would ask, yeah. So, we have slides that you wouldn't let us show us last time. And so, you can see on that fourth row down, the highlighted yellow, the total passengers, you can see what happened, a hundred seventeen thousand. This is per total fiscal year, right? And fiscal year eleven twelve, we increased the fare from fifty cents to a dollar at that time. And it dropped ninety-two and, but it came right back towards the one eighteen and is back close to what it was at that time. So, we're about a hundred ten thousand per year.
A hundred and ten thousand per year, okay. I was just trying to...
That's potentially a hundred and ten thousand less car trips, right? Is that what you're saying? A hundred ten thousand people?
No, he's just saying that's so many people...
Certainly, it's a way to look at it.
...to get on the, on the trolley. I was just curious as to, you divide that into twenty thousand or fifty or whatever it is, as to what is the cost per ride on the subsidy?
Oh, if you, for instance, took the eighty thousand, we're trying to make up and divided that, yeah, you're closer to eighty percent, eighty cent increase per rider, assuming it stayed the same.
Yeah, okay.
And we're, right now, we're proposing fifty cents to match Gold Coast.
Okay, if there are no further questions, let's get those in the audience. I think, I'm sure I must have some cards for this. You ready? This is... I got two. Is this, oh, Craig, yeah, I saw Craig out there.
I'm on four.
You're on four?
Who's on first?
Then we only have one on, in heavens, okay. Is this, is this, yeah, Adam, are you out there? Is it, is that Gregos or Barigos?
Glegos.
Yeah, Gregos.
Adam Glegos.
The people who ride the trolley can't get here.
Okay.
They can't get home.
Okay.
In looking at these fares, I took the trolley a week or so ago and I think the general fare should not be raised above a dollar. I'm kind of notoriously cheap, but I, I think it's a dollar fifty is way too much and ridership would just go way down. And, but I do think the senior and ADA Medicare rates could easily go up to fifty cents. That's a hundred percent increase, but I think seventy-five cents is too much. And I don't think the other fares listed here should go up at all. That's my opinion.
Okay.
But I really think those twenty-five cent could easily go to fifty and I don't know if that would help much anyway, but that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
When I dropped that quarter and I thought, boy, that's pretty, you know, I should, I felt I should have to pay more.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, okay, come on down, Dennis, you're next. Yeah, I, I, you're right about people trying to get to a council meeting if you're using the bus service. For the last month, I have not been using the trolley, but up to that time period, I very frequently use the trolley. Sometimes, every day, some other day, but just so happens that my son is letting me use his car, so I'm able to, you know, get around. So, first of all, there's a huge difference, I'm finding, that if you've got a car, I mean, your lifestyle is just totally different, not totally, but very different than if you, depending on the trolley. And as I said, I've just been getting, getting used to the car for this last month, but up to that, I was always depending on the trolley. I have to walk half an hour from where I live to the trolley up there by La Luna and El Roga. So, it's a half an hour to and fro. But it's vital to somebody like me, that trolley is absolutely vital because how am I going to get my food if I don't have, I got to use that trolley for the food and I have a little luggage carrying and everything? I did it repeatedly, all the time using that trolley. And, and I loved it. The trolley is a wonderful service, so that's a plug for there. But I'm just observing the people that are, ride the trolley as opposed to those who have the cars, because I have experience of both now. So, the people that ride the trolley are generally speaking, low income and, and even poor. And they're elderly. I mean, there's some, I haven't seen Madeline for a while, but she was a regular and I don't know if you know her, but it's, you know, it's, they're really colorful characters. I mean, I'd much prefer to take the trolley than, than the car, except my son's got a convertible, me out of convertibles, so, you know.
They miss you on the trolley. I said, they miss you on the trolley.
Well, I'll be back, I'll be back to the trolley. So, anyway, the good news is, I went to this program that Arthur, Arthur, is it Austin? Austin and Mr. Grant gave and I was, I gave my input there, so you don't need to repeat it, but what did I want to say? I forgot, lost my, I lost my train of thought, sorry. What did I talk about? Okay, anyway, I went to the meeting and I wanted to make a point, now I forgot it. Isn't that terrible? But when you get, you get my age, seventy-seven, oh, that, there you go, thank you very much. Seventy-seven. This is, because this is, this is, this is absolutely great, it's funny, it's, it's, how, you know, universe will provide for you. I go to the meeting with a bad attitude. The first thing I find out is they're, they're coordinating with the county, I'm seventy-seven, now I get a free ride if this thing goes through. So, I'll have a free card because I'm seventy-seven and the county says seventy-five, so if it goes through, and I understood it was, Austin said it was like, going to be like, well, a couple of weeks or a month, this thing is going to be in, in work. So, I'm looking forward to a free card, thanks, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, that's it. What is the council's pleasure?
I'm still studying these fares. If I were a trolley rider, I would like to just have one fare. You know, one dollar. That's it. So, some people...
I don't, I don't know what the thoughts are of my, my colleagues, but I would prefer before we learn, consider increasing these fares to have staff do some sort of a analysis for us as to what kind of revenues could be generated by sponsorships. I really think that's important to look at, particularly if those sponsorship revenues can go towards the fare box, and I think they can. That's what I, that's why I asked Mr. Grant if we made a contribution from the, from the general fund, if that could go towards the fare box ratio. I'm sure then if we have sponsorship revenues, that can go towards the fare box revenue and, or ratio. So, I would really like to, and I've been a lot of places, it's very tastefully done.
I'll second that if that's a motion.
I can support that.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Greg?
Want to mention, in two thousand and eleven, we did the fare increases, we looked at advertising and at that time, I recall approximately ten thousand dollars an ideal situation at that time, so we're talking six, six years ago. But it was roughly ten thousand. So, that would get us from the forty, we're, we're shooting for eighty thousand total, so it takes us from forty to roughly fifty, depending on how successful we were.
Well, let's see where that takes us.
Got a motion, seconded.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wirick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just a quick moment. So, as I understand the motion, it was for staff to investigate, looking specifically into sponsorships. I just want to draw the distinction here that we're not being asked to look into general advertising, per se.
Well, I think, I think that if you, you can characterize it as general advertising or you can characterize it as a sponsorship, whichever you want to characterize it at. Ultimately, it's the same thing.
Okay, okay. And then with that, and I'm sorry to kind of do this on the fly, but I know, Mr. Grant, I know you have a bit of a timetable in terms of what you were hoping to be able to get any proposed fee increases started. I guess the idea was to ideally try to start something before the school year started. However, I understand the direction from council. Would you like to bring this back at the August 8th meeting? Just I'm feeling some timeliness here in terms of moving this forward. I'm looking at you, Mr. Grant, and I'm looking at the council members as well to get a sense if...
I'm, I'm open to whatever staff requirements.
Okay, all right. We'll figure it out. Thank you.
If we're going to reach out to businesses and, it's going to be tough. I'll go safe because those, add agenda packets too this week, right?
We'll, we'll discuss it, thanks.
Can I ask one more question?
I have a question.
Greg, does writer, so ridership increases when school starts because children are taking the trolley?
That's correct.
And so, what I'm hearing is the public school does not offer a bus service to the children of our community?
They used to, as I understand it, have roughly twenty-five buses. I think they're down to five and are still reducing at this point. That's the hearsay I've heard, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think that's a discussion that you might want to have with them also and figure out how we can remove children from trolleys and put them on school buses.
Yeah, well, we could use ridership too if they want to give them buses, I don't know.
I'm just saying, it's a, to me, it's an interesting dilemma that, that there's a service that's being provided and it's either not being used and for whatever that reason is, and that we're picking up the, the difference of that.
I understand ridership came way up when they pulled back in buses and pretty effective, a lot of riders from Miners Oaks and so on.
Okay, we're moving to the next item, which is historic preservation. Did we, we didn't change anything else in the order, did we?
Nope.
Okay, so it is, I guess, staff, is that Matt that's going to...
On this particular item, I think the first item has to do with the city hall in the Hobson House and we're recommending that we continue this. We just had too much on the agenda this evening, so recommended that we, we can hold off on this item to a future date if, if council is okay with that recommendation. Again, this is on the city hall.
Again, this is on the city hall property.
Not sure I am.
Very well.
This has been coming for a long time.
The only thought from staff was just to try to, in terms of priority with, with everything on the agenda, so, but that's clearly council's discretion.
Okay.
Okay, we've got to, just for the benefit of the audience who may not know the rule, that whatever isn't brought up by ten-thirty doesn't get brought up, and it's trailed to the next meeting, so-
I withdraw my objection.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we can hold this one off and move to the next one, is that your thinking?
We recommend that you open the public hearing, and continue it to the-
September twelfth.
September twelfth is the way to discuss, thank you, Mr. Winiger.
Continue it to when?
To the September twelfth city council meeting.
Okay, the, the hearing is open. Motion to continue to the twelfth? Second?
Second.
Okay. Any objection?
But we have comments. We have to ask if there's comments.
Okay, well, we do have to, but we're trying to expedite things, so if there's anybody who would, is there anybody here who is, has a burning desire to speak on this particular historic site? Yeah? Okay, thanks, Greg, you're a buddy. Okay, well, if there isn't anyone else, then we will, we'll carry this forward.
I, I have a question, is that clock correct? Because electricity went out, remember?
I believe that's battery powered.
Okay, okay, of course it is, of course it is.
Don't go anyplace, Matt. Okay, that takes us to item number-
It just hasn't seen right.
Five, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Interim community development director, Matt Winiger.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. In two thousand and fifteen, at the request of the Historic Preservation Commission, the city council provided funding for two historic resource surveys. Historic Preservation Commission identified an interest in evaluating the Smith-Hobson House, the city hall, which you just continued the item on, and also the Ojai Grammar School, also known as Nordoff Grammar School, Chaparral, and which are, and also serve as the district offices for the Ojai Unified School District. The city issued a request for proposals and retained the consulting firm and the provenance, provenience group, who did the historic resource survey for both of the properties that are on your agenda this evening. In regards to the school, which is the subject of this particular hearing, the Historic Preservation Commission recommends that the city council designate the site and the buildings as a city landmark. Staff does support the recommendation with respect to the buildings. It is our opinion that the Historic Resource Survey did not fully evaluate the grounds and the other buildings on the, on the property, so we would, we would suggest that you either defer that at this point in time to a later date or a later evaluation, direct staff to do further evaluation, or just limit your designation to the, the original school buildings that are there. The, the original school buildings consist of the original Nordoff Grammar School, that was constructed in the, in the thirties, and then a kindergarten building that was built later in the nineteen-fifties. Both of the properties, or both of those elements, were found to have significance in terms of either the architecture involved, or the, the construction techniques, or the, or the architects that were involved in the construction and the design of those facilities. So, in summary again, staff's recommendation is that you designate the, the buildings, school buildings, that are on the site, as a city landmark, it'd be city landmark number twenty-four, and that we defer the action on the, the property itself. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that members of the council have.
Members of the council?
Just could you make sure we understand exactly what your recommendation is in terms of the buildings?
Yes, sir.
That would be included in your recommendation?
Yes, they would be the auditorium and the, and the, the other buildings associated with the original school.
The L.
Yes, correct, that is correct, the arcade that goes with it. And then there's a separate building on the northwest corner of the property that-
Preschool is.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Matt, you just, to clarify, on page five of twenty-four, it does show the property, and I just wanted to be clear, clear on the, that's a, it's an overhead view.
Correct.
Okay, so as I look at it from right to left, I'm, I'm seeing the auditorium, then as I'm going across, I see the, the corner structure that I'm going up. So I'm looking at technically all the tiled roof area, that's what you're talking about. And then we're talking about the additional tiled roof area, center right, but we're not talking about any of the service yard, and we're not talking of any of those huts or any of that.
That is correct.
And then the preschool is the top left corner?
Correct.
Other questions? If not, we'll open the hearing, and we have cards. Come on down. And we have Russell Sidney on deck, and we have Elise, is it?
Good evening, my name is Craig Walker. I am here tonight to support landmark status for the Nordoff Grammar School, now the Ojai Unified School District offices, and Chaparral High School. Through my work on the City Historic Preservation Commission, and as a local historian with the Ojai Valley Museum, I can tell you that there was a great deal of support in the community for landmarking these historic buildings. Most of the time, landmarking is between the property owner and the city. Often, the landmark nomination is made by the owners themselves, who want to see their property protected or to secure a tax break. In other cases, however, the general public has a strong interest in preservation, and the city must act on behalf of the public, as they do in all other zoning cases. This is one of those cases. It is my impression that most Ojai citizens want the historic buildings preserved and developed as part of an adaptive reuse project. The Ojai Theater should be a warning to us all about the importance of landmarking our historic buildings. When historic properties are not landmarked, then there is no formal basis for claiming historic value. If the city does not designate the former grammar school as a landmark, and spell out what kinds of alterations will be allowed, then every proposal by a developer will need to be relitigated as to whether the proposal impacts the historic significance of these buildings. Landmarking allows the city to be proactive in setting parameters for developers to follow. In the Ojai Valley News article announcing the HPC's decision to recommend landmarking, some school board members made comments that I feel misrepresent landmarking. One of the comments was that landmarking will lower the value of the property. There is no evidence that this is true in an area like Ojai's historic downtown. In fact, just the opposite is true. When you think about it, what's our most valuable commercial real estate is the arcade, and it's been a landmark for a number of years, and its historic designation only adds to its value. That's why people come to Ojai, and why they shop downtown. Another comment was that landmark will make the property more difficult to develop. Yes, developers will have to work within the landmark parameters, but this hasn't been a problem for the other businesses that occupy Ojai's historic downtown district. There are thirteen landmarks in the downtown area, and most of the other buildings are historic. Yet businesses work with the historic character of their buildings, and most know that being in an historic building is a draw for their customers. Also, landmarking mainly deals with the exterior envelope of the building, so developers are free to modernize the interiors to suit their needs. Another comment was that landmarking the whole parcel means that the gas pumps, maintenance buildings, and skate park will need to be preserved as historic. And this was a comment that was brought up in regard to this building too, as do you just landmark the building, or do you landmark the whole property? Even though the whole parcel may be part of the landmark designation, only the buildings called out in the landmark resolution are protected and require conservation. If you read the historian's report, none of the garages, gas pumps, or skate park are mentioned as contributing to the historic significance of the property. Those structures can be demolished, altered, or rebuilt, so long as the end result does not detract from the significance of the historic buildings. The only historic buildings are the Spanish structures designed by Royce Wilson, and the modern updates designed by Maynard Linden. The district is free to add office buildings, condos, or whatever, so long as they are compatible with the historic buildings. The school district says that they have been assured that the buildings will not be landmarked without their approval. Although the city usually tries to work with property owners to get their buy-in, and probably wouldn't landmark a marginal building without an owner's approval, the public certainly has the right to insist that the city's historic buildings be protected. There are cases where the public interest is so strong, that unless the owner can show financial hardship-
Can I ask why he's getting five minutes instead of the three minutes? I saw the light go off there. Thank you.
Okay, so anyway-
I would like to request that Mr. Walker be allowed to finish his comments, and in fairness, I would, I wouldn't mind listening if somebody else has, this is so important. Okay.
So there are cases-
How much longer are you going to need, Russ?
Just two minutes, or one minute. There are cases where the public interest is so strong, that unless the owner can show financial hardship, the city can landmark without permission, just as they do any zoning decision. As stated earlier, the city needs to consider the community's interest in these buildings. For their part, the school board has said on several occasions that they will respect the historic character of the buildings. If this is so, then they should be willing to landmark the buildings, so developers know in advance what they can propose. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. The, Russell Sidney? No, this is complete street, I don't know where, God, how are these getting?
Seven and eight, thank you, not that, don't need to speak, yeah.
Yeah, is it Elise De, I don't know. Oh, wait, how do you browse it?
De Poit, like Detroit, De Poit.
De Poit?
Oh, I sound.
Okay, we're, we're getting to be old friends, Elise, good, good to have you. You wanted to comment?
Yes, I, I really can't add anything more. Craig Walker said, said everything so perfectly, and eloquently, and expertly, that I would just like to agree with everything he said, and I support landmarking the school, the school building, the grammar, Ojai's grammar school. Grammar School, thank you.
Thank you, Elise. Okay. Is there anyone else out there who may have submitted a card, and it is not in the slot, Dawn? Yeah, come on, let's let, is that Jane?
Yeah. Do you have all of our cards, though?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, what's going on in this little file system, but I should, but I'm not, where did they?
I apologize for my outburst.
That's all right.
I'm Jane Wile, I'm president of the school board, and I'm, first, I'd like to confirm that you all received my email yesterday, asking you to continue this item to another time. Okay, I hope you do know that many of our students and our teachers are not in, you know, not in Ojai right now, July is a vacation time, so you have people here who are supporting the movement, but those who might be opposing it do not have the opportunity to come because of your timing and choosiness. Also, I would like to quote Mr. Blatz from our joint meeting in June sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. "I do not know of any property that the city has moved forward on landmarking without the permission of the landowner." And Mr. Wyrick replied, "You are absolutely right." And then, at the time, Acting City Attorney Matthew Summers said, "It is possible for the city to landmark a property over the objections of the property only, but only after providing notice, and only after the opportunity for the property owner to have a hearing on the issue. It is not typically done in the context of intergovernmental relationships with another entity, and I do not have the sense from the council that this is where they would go. It would be rather a continuing conversation between the city and the school district with the Historical Preservation Committee in, on that loop as well." That's the last communication we had about it, two thousand and fifteen. So I would like to reiterate what my email said, that the city has violated City Code four dash eight point zero five C, which requires that the Historic Preservation Committee provide notification to property owners through certified mail, at least ten days prior to any hearing conducted on the landmark status, and the district did not receive that notification. I do not understand why you would want to move forward on this tonight, and force the district into formal objections and legal challenges. I believe voters would be very angry that the city would be using their taxpayer money on both city and school district taxpayer money, and spending it on attorney's fees to fight each other. It just doesn't make any sense to me. We have made every vocal opportunity to say we absolutely want to work with the city, we care about the building and the community, and I don't know where your fear, or the community's fear that something would happen to this property has come from. So finally, I have to disagree with the gentleman that spoke earlier, to place a landmark designation on the property at this time, before we have even had any proposals from the outside, would surely limit any interest, for fears it would become a bureaucratic nightmare for a developer. You all know, and the community knows, that the city will be able to address any concerns on that development, when the developer, if one comes forward, which hasn't even happened yet. They would need to request zoning changes, they would need to go to the planning commission and go through that process, and I think that would be the chance for the city and the community to make limitations. The, the planning commission absolutely has the opportunity to say, no, that doesn't work with what we think goes in the downtown area. So again, I would ask that you please postpone any action tonight, saving us from any need for a formal objection and appeal, and allow the two bodies to meet again, to continue to converse, as Mr. Summers said you would two years ago. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask Ms. Wild? This is coming to us based on a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission, and I read the packet, but I didn't see any participation by the school district at the Historic Preservation Commission level.
That's correct, we never heard about it. We were not notified.
Could staff address that?
Happy to. I'm not exactly sure what noticing was provided of the HPC hearing. I would, however, it is very clear that the school district received notice of this hearing before the council, as is evidenced by Ms. Wild's presence, and-
I saw it in the newspaper.
And I also understand-
Calm down.
-that staff sent a certified mail notice to the school district, probably to Mr. Banks, or superintendent of the hearing tonight. Their presence would provide the adequate opportunity to speak to the matter to the council.
But the code is for the historic preservation, if you didn't have that.
Excuse me. If the council would like to ensure full, would like to ensure that the noticing concerns are resolved beyond any reproach, an easy vehicle would be to have the, the Historic Preservation Commission consider the matter anew, in a new hearing with further notice provided. But the council can move forward tonight on this record.
Mayor Johnston?
The question being asked is, what was, I assume that there's some file of the notice that supposedly, or was thought to have been sent out? But that isn't going to change what, you know, your point is well taken, and if there is a confusion here, go ahead.
No, I'd like a, I'd like a, I think the issue we asked is a matter of fact, in terms of the noticing at the Historic Preservation Commission level, because that's where this, the process starts, in terms of notification, and there's appeal, period, for the Historic Preservation Commission decision, as I understand it. And I'd like, that's what I think that we are looking for, is the staff noticing of the owner at the Historic Preservation Commission procedure level.
See, Mr. Mayor, my, my concern is that this comes to us from, as a recommendation. However, if all of the input wasn't available to the, to the HPC, because of a failure of us to provide proper notice, then I think we need, our direction tonight would be to send it back to the HPC with proper notice to the property owner.
That's the answer I'm looking for.
And that's, and why I brought it up is, I didn't see any participation of the school district at that level, but I see participation of them tonight, which would indicate to me that either they ignored the HPC notice- me that either they ignored the HPC notice, or they weren't giving it.
Do we know which-
And I don't know which one it is.
Which one it is?
I don't know off the top of my head, but for the record, given the concerns and the confusion here, I would go on record to support saying that perhaps it would be best to go back to the HPC, make sure that they're given the proper notice. I would strongly support the council going in that direction tonight, given the concerns that we've heard.
Mayor Johnson? I just want to say that this council should expect to have a clear answer on our question about whether noticing was done properly at the HPC level at tonight's meeting from staff.
Mr. Winiger?
We have every reason to expect that.
Okay, well, thank you, Jane. Are there-
I can certainly look into the file. I don't know. I don't know exactly how that's-
We don't have an answer tonight.
I don't have an answer to that.
Either way, and the fact, whether we have an answer or don't have an answer, clearly there's a misunderstanding or a sense that, is there, are there other people out there who filled out, oh, well, yeah. Are there other people who didn't turn cards in, or that somehow the mail never got delivered over here? Okay.
Did you fill out a card?
Okay. Is there anybody else out there that would, you-
It should be a card, right?
Okay, well, I'm, are they numbered?
You should have a few more cards from the other board members.
We're all here.
Every one of us.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what. I don't have the cards, and I'm not sure why, but we will hear from anybody who would like to come forward to speak. We've got Kevin Ruff.
As you know, I'm also on the school board, and I will just say, you know, broadly, I don't want to talk about technicalities in whether this goes back to the Historical Preservation Commission and comes back here again. It is worth just having conversations, and I feel like that conversation we had in 2015 when we were all sitting here was a positive thing, and I want to say that in the community, if there's a notion, and we've said it over and over at the school board, and I don't begrudge anybody from wanting, you want to, you know, nail it and put your flag in it and say that's historically landmarked, so be it, but I just want you to understand at least where I'm coming from, and where I think generally the board is coming from, which is, we have merely wanted to see what universe of possibilities is out there for this property. That's it. And my understanding is that if it's landmarked, that there has to be a year notice given to the Historical Preservation Commission, I believe, it's like a year for any developer who wants to do something. I believe I read that, but, but, but at any rate, at any rate, what we are interested in is merely seeing what's out there, and we have so many times said, you guys have so much authority over what happens on that property. The train ain't leaving the station, but we have felt like the more hair that we put on the idea of somebody spending money to really consider developing the property, the less interest we're going to have. I have to be honest, at this point, you guys, many of you have been here much longer than me and know this much better than I do, I imagine we may not get any interest whatsoever in doing anything, because this looks so fraught, and we've already seen so many articles written about, you know, people's concerns, and what it has to be, and what it can't be, and what it must be, and what it shouldn't be. So all we have wanted to do, from the school board's perspective, is to see what's out there. I mean, we've, you know, I've talked to Bill about this, we're even at the point where we could reverse our decision to even surplus this property. I mean, we have literally done nothing that's irrevocable at all, and we all love the downtown, and we all love the buildings, and if you can imagine, let's say someone has, a miracle occurs, and there's some project with somebody with real money who wants to do something, and it can bring some money into the school district, and it will be great for the downtown, and we all agree, and it's just, maybe the landmarking is pretty close to exactly what they could do, but the landmarking has some little aspect to it that, that doesn't work, and maybe subjectively, we could work around it in the planning commission, but because it's landmarked, it's now sort of too rigidly in that position. I don't know, but, but, but I certainly does, it doesn't seem to me that there's any harm in seeing what's out there, and letting us as the school district, sort of in an orderly way, see what's out there. I know you're going to say, and Bill, you kind of hinted at it before, you know, this has been a long time coming, but gee, you know, it's sure happening at a moment that looks like it is a, you know, attempt to end run the boards getting proposals for the property. We just want to get the proposals. You guys would have to rezone it, you'd have to approve the planning, and there's so many miles to go before any of that happens, and we as a school board want to have community meetings over whatever proposals there are. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. I can't call you by name because I don't have a card, but if there are people in the back who thought they filled one out, or did, come on down and-
Mr. Mayor, before the next speaker, if I could clarify a point?
Pardon me, just want to know what?
Thank you. One point to clarify is that the provision in the code referred to by the prior speaker in section 4809, requiring 12 months' notice to the Historic Preservation Commission before defacing, demolishing, adding, altering, or moving a landmark, has not been enforced by the city since 2015, as that particular section of the code is unenforceable. If a landmark is designated on this property or any other property, a work permit is required for work requiring a work permit, modifications, demolition, et cetera, but not a 12-year, 12-month waiting period.
Okay.
That provision is not enforceable. Thank you.
Can I clarify that, too? Does a work permit go to HPC?
Yes, work permits are reviewed and approved by the Historic Preservation Commission, subject to appeal to the council.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Griffin, and I, too, am a school board member, and I was elected to, to ensure that the students of this valley have the best education we can give them. And as everyone in this valley knows, that due to declining enrollment, we need to find other sources of revenue besides the state. We need to be able to leverage our assets as best we can and use those to make the improvements in our school districts that are needed. By designating this property as historic, you are basically tying our hands. I have to tell you that personally, as a third-generation Ojai person, I get the need to keep this cherished landmark and part of our downtown. It's integral to our downtown area. I understand that. I fully appreciate that. However, by tying our hands and not working with us, you are limiting what we can do, how we can benefit those students, and as, as Kevin and Jane have both said, there are multiple times when it's going to come before the city that you will have input. This is not going to be this unilateral school board pushing anything through. None of us, none of us want to see a Trump Tower in the middle of our downtown. I mean, we all know that. We're not here to butt up against the city. We are looking for your help in this. If a project comes to us that, that benefits both the downtown area, benefits our entire valley, but also gives us the added ability to provide the education that our kids need, that's something we need to do, and I'm asking for your help to do that rather than tying our hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson, members of the city council. My name is Michael Shanahan. I'm also a member of the Board of Education. For me, this is a little bit of nostalgia. My actual first opportunity to address the city council was over a deficient notice for a cell tower, so I find myself here for apparently the same thing. But I'm going to depart from all of my remarks because they were written before everybody else said stuff, and I don't like to repeat myself. What I do want to say, though, is that we heard a lot of talk about other historical properties and how well they were used, but there's a difference between looking at a bare storefront and multiple acres in the middle of town which are used for multiple different things concurrently. This is a very complicated process. There are a number of ways to approach it. I think it is far too complicated for a blanket historical designation. In fact, I really was looking forward to the mutual conversation with the city in terms of how we would partner in enticing developers. That was where we thought we were headed, but I think there is a misplaced concern, as was referred to earlier, that we're rushing into something, and I think that's very, very inaccurate. We've had months of public meetings, public hearings, committee meetings, we've killed a million trees figuratively to put a ton of material out on the internet. Nothing that we have done has been in private, and believe me, nothing that we have done has been fast. So there is very little rush to, to, to require that the council take action tonight. In fact, I think the preferred course of action would be for us to work jointly. I have one final concern, and that's that I think it is inconvenient at best that the council, which has now become a negotiator to acquire the property, is concurrently considering burdening that property. I think right now that potentially represents a potential conflict of interest, and I think that is somewhat inappropriate. But above all, I think the best thing would be to defer this conversation so that the two bodies can have it jointly, and we can cover all of the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thane, come on down.
I actually did not want to say any of these things or talk about it. I would much have preferred to have had a conversation, but since we might not have an opportunity, I think it's important to say that I'm a big fan of history and historical buildings, but I was also elected to represent the Ojai Unified School District, and I feel that I am responsible to make sure that we provide the best resources we can to the children today and well into the future. I've consistently supported the preservation of the district offices. Personally, though, I think the preschool where the Place to Grow location is, is probably one of the ugliest buildings in Ojai, and, but it's very functional, and it would cost a lot of money to change it, so I don't see a change coming there anytime soon. But in any case, it's my sincere belief that the future of these resources should be managed by the school district, those who were elected to manage those facilities. The city recently asked to negotiate in good faith to lease the school district property, and I looked at the definition of good faith in the law dictionary, and it said, "An honest intent to act without taking an unfair advantage." And they define bad faith in part by saying, "Intentional dishonest act by not fulfilling legal or contractual obligations, misleading another, entering into an agreement without the intention or means to fulfill it, or violating basic standards of honesty in dealing with others." Statements have been made to me both publicly and privately by members of the city council that they would not act to approve without the consent of the school district. Tonight's actions by the city make those statements a lie, and I believe that's bad faith. Failure by the city to make any offer on the lease agreement after requesting to negotiate in good faith is bad faith. The action tonight will also impact the affordable housing overlay that you requested be put on the property. I believe that exhibits bad faith not only to the school district but to the state of California. I'm not going to comment on the specifics of the landmarking because you haven't provided it to us. We have no idea what you want to do or what you don't want to do. And here you're going to take a vote. You were asking at the beginning of this item, what are you even voting on? I don't think you know, and we certainly don't know. You're putting me really in an untenable position because I need to fight for our rights as a school district to do what the voters elected us to do, and that may require taking legal action against the city. As was mentioned before, forcing taxpayers to pay for both sides of a legal fight is I think that the code quoted that you said is not enforced or hasn't been enforced, based on my experience, doesn't mean at all that you won't try to enforce it. I have lost a lot of confidence in the city council by its actions here tonight by not notifying us. We were never notified that this was going to be on the agenda. We're the property owner. We read about it in the newspaper. We heard about it on Facebook. Is that how you treat the school district? I hope that it's not in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Thane. And then, last point is another, is that just a repeat of the question we asked earlier about notice?
There's-
Actually, it sounds like it's even a different notice that they, at least Thane was saying he didn't receive.
There's two separate key noticing issues. The first is noticing of the Historic Preservation Commission's meeting.
Right.
As I sit here now, I do not know if that was noticed correctly or not. We can confirm with the file. However, you may move forward tonight nonetheless, or you may remand it to the HPC, solving that problem and taking that argument off the table. With respect to tonight, I have not verified with an envelope, but I have been told by staff that it, notice was provided by certified mail to the school district of tonight's hearing.
So you would have, or there'd be evidence in the file of that?
And again, we would confirm with the file.
That's more between us and the family here than not between us and the school district, but we do need to know that. Okay, so Brian, were you wanting to speak on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, could I just ask one question while it's fresh in my mind? There was an allegation that we're acting in, in bad faith because we are, we've put forward a notice that we wanted to deal with the property, and now we may be subjecting it to a landmark status. Hasn't the time run for us to, to proceed on anything that we were doing there?
We put our initial notice in within the required 90-day period. The school district responded with a notice that said, paraphrasing, they would not negotiate with us absent a specific proposal-
Correct.
-to lease the property. We responded, I believe from Mr. McCray, with a notice along the lines of, "We would like to have a discussion." We received no response.
Okay, but has the time expired or anything-
Or I could be wrong on the no response.
That's not true.
I'm sorry. I spoke on the last point.
That last statement is not accurate, right?
I'll let Mrs. McCray speak to the response.
Well, the response to that was, we asked for some additional information from the school district, which they didn't, eventually did provide that to us, and we've been studying that information, and that's where we're at at this point. But the-
Mr. Attorney is correct. The district did take a position in terms of, absent some specific proposal, they were not willing to actually sit down and have a meeting with us.
Councilman Blatt's question is, is has the 90 days expired?
Right.
It's August 6th. Is the date an expired?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I believe that's correct.
Sorry, sorry for not answering the question directly.
So we're still within the period of bad faith. Okay.
It's here from the public.
Okay, any other questions before I go back to the, okay, Brian?
Thank you. I guess if people are looking for someone to throw arrows at, who are looking to question their ethics, conduct conspiracy theories, improve the negotiating position of the school district and the property at the thing, that I'm the man they should be shooting at. Been on the Historic Preservation Commission for several years now. Before that, I was the museum rep. Before that, I was in the audience, listening to David Mason. Year and a half, two years ago, we came to the council. We said, "The Historic Preservation Commission had decided we would like to get funding from the city rather than get the funding from the people who were requesting the historical report to support their property in the designation or undesignation." Always, mostly the designation. And so we came to the city, and we said, "Okay, there's two historic pieces of historical locations that we would like the city council to provide funding for." That was $5,000 each. There was a RFQ that was done to find a new group, something outside what we normally see. The provenience group was, that was conducted by the Community Development Director at that time, the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and perhaps other people. They found that person. And the wait began. As Councilman Wyrick knows, as others know, we waited, as Acting Community Development Director Winiger knows behind me, we waited, we waited, we waited. We brought this up in agendas, we brought this up in Historic Preservation Commission meetings. Our meetings are fully televised, they're on YouTube. I know, I watch them, I download them wherever I'm on vacation. If I miss a meeting, I watch it on YouTube where I'm at, so I can- If I miss a meeting, I watch it on YouTube where I'm at, so I can watch. So it's not like we're hiding what we're doing under a bushel. Whether there was proper notification, I don't know what that means. It's something that's done before staff, before something comes to us. It comes to us, and we're given information, the historic report that, again, we were looking for. I've been kind of kind in my opinions, but today I'm not feeling kind. We received the historic report on this, and then we waited and waited and waited for the school district. And why were we waiting and waiting and waiting? That was because the school district would not provide the information that the provenance group needed in order to, for it to come before the Historic Preservation Commission. You'll remember, I was sitting in the audience when Councilman Wirick said, "I have a copy." I think this was in March. It's dated January 5th, and I was halfway between astounded and coming unglued because, again, we had been asking Mr. Winiger and the former community development director each month on when we were going to see this. And so this is a process that's taken place. So what else has taken place? So at our, again, HBC, not a secret meeting, not very attended, we held this meeting. We had the information. We got the historic report. That historic report was passed on to somebody that has spoken tonight for the school board, and those historic reports, as I've received them, has also been passed on to a person who's in the administration for the school district. I can only guess that she then took that and passed those historic reports out to members of someone in that meeting. So not my responsibility to go and find out if they got that report, if they read that report. But again, all up-to-date historic reports that have been received by me have been forwarded to somebody within the school district, at least one board member and one administrative person. Again, to you, the school district offered a tour of the Nordoff Elementary School. I went out and I attended that. I walked around. It was fabulous. It was fascinating. It was educational. It was complete. The only one we weren't able to get into was where the food. That's because the person with the key just couldn't, they couldn't get them there fast enough for the tour. But they were open. They were honest. They did everything, and they explained it to us. I attended that meeting, as an individual, but also a member of the HBC. So I got up there, and I did my few-minute pitch, and then I stood there, and I answered questions from each of the school board members. I don't have anything to hide. I'm, as you know, I'm a member. I live in Oakview.
Brian, you need to kind of wrap it up.
I'm sorry, I will. So also, my children both were raised in the Ventura Unified School District, so not an axe grind other than I'm for preserving things, so.
Well, it's not, I don't think the question is whether it was knowable or had reason to know. The question is, was proper notice given, which isn't your responsibility, and so.
No, that isn't, but the fact that people are saying that they have no idea what you're landmarking tonight, it's on your agenda.
Well, okay. Bye.
Let me ask, just for clarification, you're saying that certain people who spoke tonight did get copies?
One person.
Okay.
Yes.
I received an early copy, but it's been totally changed since I received that early copy.
Okay, and I've provided all updates I've received, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Scott, come on up, and I'll get to-
Johnny, it's Hank. Hank Bangster, I'm the superintendent.
Oh.
It's okay. Johnny, we know each other. We've known each other for a few years, and it's late, and it's late. Matthew, to you, first of all, since you named me. If you sent a letter certified and we missed it, I apologize. I'd like to see the letter. Okay? So that might take care of that particular notice issue. Brian, you're absolutely correct. We have a copy of a report dated in May. I think the issue here is not whether the Historic Preservation Commission did its work completely and openly and transparently. You communicated with the city council. The problem is, the city council did not communicate with us, and that's the issue coming out of the June 16, 2015 meeting where Paul, you were extremely articulate, Bill, various people spoke about the critical nature of having two intergovernmental bodies work together, right? And to hear about tonight's public hearing in the June 14, Ojai Valley News, if there was a certified letter, fine, but that's not the way, Steve, you and I should communicate. You should call me and say, "This is what's on the agenda, and this is what we're recommending." I know that didn't happen because I communicated back to you. So what I'm saying is, in the future, and I'll be finished up here as superintendent in a few weeks, but in my opinion, these two bodies should be extremely optimistic about working together. There are 10 very talented people, two very talented staffs, two very talented leaders with Steve and Andy, and I think you have every reason to believe that you can work beautifully together once this issue is deferred tonight, as Steve properly recommended, and you move forward in a very different way. So you, that's, yes, he did recommend that, Bill. He recommended it articulately at the beginning of this agenda item. So what I would recommend is exactly that, exactly what Jane asked for in her email, exactly what others have asked for. That is the right way to move forward. The absolute wrong thing to do tonight is to shove a vote on the reduced amount of historic preservation identification. Have this intergovernmental meeting, a replica, if you will, of June 16, 2015, and move forward positively.
Thank you, Hank. I, it was a promotion or demotion to the Chamber of Commerce that, okay. Is there anybody else from the school district out there? Okay, Don, from the museum? Okay, and then that should wrap up this part of the-
Don Teating, I'm actually speaking as a member of the public. I understand there's multiple, perhaps multiple procedural issues before you. I'm not going to talk about that, but I feel like I would be remiss tonight if I did not take time to read the letter that was authored by David Mason on June 8 regarding the landmarking of this building. The letter addresses the history of the building as well as his support of the nomination of the historic Nordoff Grammar School as a City of Ojai historical landmark. The letter reads, "The beautiful Ojai Grammar School building may well, very well have come about because of the great 1906 San Francisco earthquake. Living near what is now Dodger Stadium, Roy Wilson, showing an interest in becoming a draftsman, was encouraged by his teachers to move to Berkeley and study the field of architecture. The great earthquake of 1906 would cut his education short, but instead would provide him with practical experience through the rebuilding of the great city. With additional training, talent, and education, Roy Wilson moved to Santa Paula in 1914, where he purchased 40 acres to develop homes surrounded by natural beauty. By 1920, he was designing the mansions and important buildings for most of Ventura County. By 1927, the Ojai Valley would be one of the lucky towns to brag on the beautiful and new modern school buildings designed by the famous architect Roy Wilson. The Nordoff Grammar School was designed so that it could be enlarged without changing the design. The Ventura Free Press in 1927 commented, and I quote, "The Nordoff Schoolhouse is spoken of in very complimentary terms by all alike. I recommend landmark status for this building as soon as possible. Thank you in advance, I am. Sincerely, signed, David M. Mason." Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay. What is the counsel's budget, Bill?
Are we closing the public hearing?
It's called the hearing closure.
What?
We're closing.
You're right. I'm doing really well tonight, Hank. Okay, well, if there's no one else that wishes to speak, the hearing is now closed. Counsel will take it under submission, and Mr. Mayor Protam Wirick.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a couple of things that are highly unfortunate that's come out of the discussion tonight. One is, we don't have clarity on the specific noticing procedures and adherence to the requirements that are there for a reason. And that's distracted us from, unfortunately, I think the other tragic aspect of this is the discussion of the content of the Historic Resources Report, which was actually quite inspiring to read, and I urge everyone to read it. It's on the, you know, you can look at the agenda packets and pull it up and read it, and to realize that this was really integral to part of the City Beautiful Movement, the construction of this school that started with the 1917 reinvention of Ojai. It was the same architectural inspiration. It was the same idea of architecture as contributing to the betterment of all, and not just an enclosure. And what's tragic is that we've gotten to, you know, we've, I feel like the city actually has acted in good faith, and this council has acted in good faith, instead of, instead of, you know, in terms of the people that we ask and appoint to volunteer and dedicate all kinds of parts of their life to the cause of historic preservation, and they asked to study this and go through the whole proper procedure of it. And now we're looking at a situation where we didn't get an answer as to whether the proper noticing was done for that venue of those commission hearings, which is where this discussion is supposed to occur in detail. That's where it's supposed to happen, and then we take up the recommendation. So I'm feeling, it's highly unfortunate that it's taking away from the content of the report, which is quite inspiring, actually, to think about how this fits into the history and what David Mason mentions. And I think it should go back to, if there's a noticing issue, it should, we should follow our procedures scrupulously and go back to the Historic Preservation Commission.
May I have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Mayor, I think that our motion should be just to send it back to HBC with all the proper notice for the hearing, regardless of whether or not there was proper notice, because obviously there's a lot of confusion here. And I think it's an important enough property, and it's also an intergovernmental agency. I think we owe them the respect to do it that way. So in my opinion, I don't really care to hear anything more of whether proper notice was given or not. I'd just like to send it back.
Can we have a motion? We have a second?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Randy?
I just have some, I'm sure we're all going to have a couple of comments, but once again, we've got a position before us all that divides the community. And just, it troubles me the fact that we just can't figure this out, how to work together on any of these issues. I understand our position. I understand completely what HPC did, and I agree with Mr. Wirick 100%. Reading the history of this site is just incredible. The same with the Hobson. It's just, it just opens your eyes to this community. On the other hand, I also understand the fact that the school board has their concerns and their needs and their wants, and that what we need to do, aside from the HPC, we need to come together and have another joint session somewhere. We need to bring this community together about the heart of this city, and that's that eight and a half acres that we all look at on a daily basis. And I'm just, I'm lost on why that doesn't supersede any and all other discussions in this community. We all want what's best. Let's all get together and talk about it. Let's all get together and solve it. That's where I'm at on this. The landmarking, you know what, is important. It's not the priority. The priority is what the community would like to do with this eight acres. That should be the priority, and that's where I'm at on this.
Okay, well, we have a motion in a second. I think we should-
I just want to ask, if it goes back to the Historic Preservation Committee, at what point do we get together with the school board? Because Jane, while in her letter, often made this, I really like, you know?
There are two things going on in answer to your question. One is the council and the school board getting together, which has been going on. Hank and I met with Andy and the city manager months ago, and then the council met, and then there was a tour. That's one part of it. The other part of it is due process and proper notice. We don't know for what reason it may be proper notice was given, and somehow it failed. I'm with Paul. Why don't we refer this back, I won't say start again, because we've got a lot of information here, and the school board is well aware this is coming, you know, dot the i's, cross the t's, and then move it back up here. Now, there's, what Randy says is the second portion of it, which is the landmarking of the building. This could have happened 20 years ago. It could happen 10 years from now. The real question is, is what happens to the property, and what does the school district do in the meantime? So I think we should be on two tracks, and the first track is, is to kind of clean this up a little. So if there's no further comment, let's have a roll call on the referral back to the commission.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Wirick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Alms.
So one other thing while we're here, Mayor, how can, can we have the city manager and the assistant superintendent get together, and can we plan a joint session, whether it's here or whether it's at Sarrazati, but someplace where it can be mic'd, it can be televised, and it can have an opportunity to allow the public to weigh in jointly with both groups? And I think we can do that in the interim while we're waiting for HPC to do their, to do their evaluation.
Not on the, not on the agenda tonight, so.
Sense of the council for the city manager to make inquiries.
Right.
I have no problem making inquiries, but my thinking is, the school board's going to do whatever the school board's going to do.
And they have their responsibilities.
They have their responsibilities. So we want a tennis complex there, the city says, and they want to sell it to somebody for $75 million. They're going to do whatever they want to do. If they want to reach out to the community and talk about what the community wants, then more power to them, but I don't see how we need to meddle in that.
Okay, well, and that's not on the agenda tonight, so without, we will, but the city manager, I would encourage to talk with the superintendent of schools and see how we can sort out all of this procedural stuff that has created some hard feelings.
We need a one-minute break.
One-minute break? Oh, okay.
You're on the clock.
I'll take care of that.
Two more items.
What do we got? Wait streets. Do we want to wait for Susan?
I don't think we need to.
I would like to hold a public hearing or to have this discussion item either by itself or with only one other agenda, agendaized item, so that we can give the opportunity for the community to actually weigh in.
On the streets?
On the streets. It's a big, it's a significant change.
May I make a counter-suggestion?
Yeah.
That if we're going to have a special meeting, we combine the Sarzati Park master plan with the complete streets.
Great, I'm for that. I would go along with that.
And as soon as-
That way, we're getting both master plans done at the same time.
And probably in September.
Right. The second meeting is September, or that suffice?
Or a special meeting.
Or a special.
Okay, so we're going to, a motion to continue this matter?
Yes.
Okay.
With reluctance, I think it's a great plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved in second. You want to wait for Susan to get back before we vote on? Does anybody else need a break?
No.
Okay. Besides the audience.
We could, if there's a majority, we can vote, I mean.
Well, there are people in the audience who did come to-
Oh, yeah.
-to address the subject.
Yeah, we should hear, let's hear.
Those who had the courtesy and the endurance to sit here, I would bring up some of the things that they sent me in writing, but if they're here and would like to bring them up themselves, Tim, would you like to?
We'll take notes.
Yeah, sure. You have, you have the notes in your email. I sent, I sent all the council members an email today. I have actually one very brief thing to say, and I've waited a long time to say it, so thank you for letting me say it. So I said, I trust all of you see my, saw my email requesting four-way stop signs at all nine bike paths intersections. So we have one dedicated bike path in town one. That's it.[1798.87] That's it. We don't have any bike lanes yet. We don't have a bike park yet. We haven't done much of anything to encourage people to ride instead of drive yet. In my humble opinion, it's important to make sure our one, one bicycle-related asset in this town is as safe as possible, so we set the right precedent for new bicycle-related infrastructure that's soon to come. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I received several remarks through the email asking for the same thing. Well, when we bring it up for a lengthy discussion, I don't know what the traffic people have to say about it, but as somebody who's sort of the number one pedestrian in town, me, I have noticed that we've improved a little bit by repainting the streets so that the cars know, but it's still, I've seen some near misses. But it's one of those issues where if you put stop signs in, I've had cyclists say the reason they don't use the bike trail is because they have to stop at every intersection. I've had pedestrians or people in cars who say, I stop and then nobody knows what to do next. So it is an issue that we need to, to consider. And certainly there are three or four of those intersections that are more hazardous than others, but four-way stops do have their, you know, it cuts both ways.
Thrash it out.
Well, this is one of the reasons that I wanted to have its own session, is the fact that not only that, but we're talking about introducing a completely different thought process as to how the streets are going to be utilized in our community. And obviously it's not going to happen overnight, but it's still something that, imagine if we asked Mr. Grant how many...
If we've decided to have a special meeting, let's have a special meeting.
In your absence, there's a motion in a second, but we held, held the vote until you got back.
Oh, you know why I can't find it? Because I put it in a special binder.
That's okay. We are continuing the matter.
Yes!
So we'll have a special meeting.
Okay, you have a special binder for the special meeting, okay?
All right.
Can we have a, is there any objection to the continuing this at this late hour?
I waited 20 years. I can wait another week.
Might be another month.
Okay. The city manager and the mayor will work to...
Yeah, we'll come back with a proposed date for a special meeting in September.
All right, now it's a good day.
Okay, citizens, I say the Sea Frog issue, item number eight. Kimberly?
I can't believe it.
I think, what, or we have a staff report or something or what?
Is there a staff report?
Yeah, I can briefly give this. Council was asked staff to just simply transmit and put on the next agenda, reach out to Sea Frog to get their proposal, and we have done that and it's been provided in your packet. And I know Kimberly Rivers is here to give a presentation and be happy to answer any questions. Again, we're looking for some direction from council on this particular matter.
Okay.
Hello, Mayor Johnston, council members. So I'm Kimberly Rivers with Sea Frog and I have a couple slides. And my intention is to be very brief and devote the time to questions, comments, and any clarifications you want on the proposal that was submitted. So as it comes up, I can face this way.
Yeah, you can. There we go.
So our proposal is focused on protecting and strengthening the Ojai Valley area plan in the general plan update process that currently is going on at the county. And so I wanted to just make sure that both the public, for people watching, and the council really understands that. Next slide, please.
Do you have the button to push on that?
So the Ojai Valley area plan states that discretionary development in the Ojai Valley shall be found to have a significant adverse impact on regional air quality if daily emissions would be greater than five pounds per day, I'm going to paraphrase, rocks and NOx. And, next slide. So that seems like pretty clear language, right? And that applies to all projects. Sea Frog, because of our focus on oil and gas, has seen this issue come up with those projects, but just keep in mind that for any discretionary projects in the county, and that's the Ojai Valley area plan, the orange part, right, excluding the city. And the clusters of dots are oil and gas wells, but that Ojai Valley area plan, five-pound per day rule applies to that whole area. Next slide, please. So a photograph of the Ojai Valley, because of the beautiful bowl shape, right, the pink moment, the fabulous mountains, it also traps air pollutants. And so that's why the five-pound-per-day rule was put into effect and why it's so important. Next slide, please. This also, this was prepared by Dr. Steve Colome, who's a Sea Frog advisor and an air quality expert for a presentation he gave to the county. And it shows the Ojai ozone violations that have gone down throughout the years. There's been great improvement because of this rule. Next slide, please. And what's the problem then? So in Sea Frog's experience in working on the projects that we're monitoring and in working with the county, we have seen a policy that unwrites that five-pound-per-day rule. And actually, the city of Ojai manager last year, and this was part of the proposal and attachment, confirmed that in their view. It allows projects to be approved without full environmental review. That phrase adverse significant impact is a SEQA trigger word. That's my word. That means that when something has that adverse significant impact, environmental review under SEQUA is required. And so when the county is calculating the air emissions in the way that they're doing and they're avoiding that phrasing of adverse significant impact, they're avoiding that SEQUA review. And it's loopholes in language that leads them to create their air quality assessment guidelines that are giving them their pathway to get around that five-pound-per-day rule. And so our work in the general plan is going to be about getting concise, enforceable, and clear language, so that's not possible. Next slide, please. And in order to do that, we need legal expertise. As you know, Sea Frog was a young organization founded in 2013 here in the Ojai Valley, right? Ojai Valley residents got concerned about some oil and gas projects. We're primarily volunteer. I'm the only staff member and we need legal expertise. So last year, the Sea Frog Board submitted requests for proposals from several law firms throughout the state and did the review process and selected the firm of Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger, which in January, we retained them to help us with this process. And that's my presentation and I'm, of course, here to answer any questions.
Questions from the council?
I hate to...
You hate to what?
Always be first out of the shade. Just to be clear, if that's okay, Mayor?
Yes, absolutely.
The idea is to, for Sea Frog, in essence, to kind of, to act somewhat analogously to how we operated with flow.
Correct.
In terms of having a public policy goal and enlisting some, an organization to help gather resources to pursue that public policy goal. And in that light, my understanding is, and just to clarify or confirm or contradict, that the, the idea would be to, in effect, act as the organizing agency to solicit sufficient resources for the firm, this firm that specializes in this kind of work, to pursue the policy goal of protecting the Ojai, protecting the integrity of the existing Ojai area plan and the general plan update. Is that accurate?
I think so. I don't know that I fully understand what you mean when you say gathering resources, so I...
What I'm trying to say is that if other, if other organizations wish to provide resources, would that be through the retaining, the retaining...
Other organization? I don't know what you mean.
Let's say there are other organizations that want to contribute to this effort.
Okay.
In terms of the public policy goal. All right, and they would...
They share the same goal?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, and you were talking, you've retained this firm, this legal firm. So how would those funds be gathered to support that effort with that firm that's been retained?
How would those funds, so...
Through you or go separate arrangements with the...
It could be either or. So currently, Sea Frog is the client of Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger. If another organization wanted to partner with us and share our goals and support either with just volunteers' effort or contribute funds to that, we would be open to that. If another organization wanted to approach Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger and hire them, that is also a way to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
It did.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd just like to touch on, you know, I'm, I'm in support of this based on the fact that Councilman Wyrick brought up is, I didn't believe that we, as a, as a council, contributed early enough or early on enough in the flow discussion and in the flow commitment from our community. Therefore, I am willing to, to, to say, let's get on the front end of this, not on the back end. However, my concern was how that money was going to be spent, is it a one-time lump-sum payment to you and that you in turn will see fit to distribute it for fighting case by case by case? And is there any way that we can get some type of, of, I don't need to know how much money you're spending, but I'd like to know what you're spending the money on? So is there any way that you can keep the council and the community in the loop as to what you're doing, how you're doing it, why you're doing it, and so on?
So I'll answer that second question first. Yes, absolutely. We can provide an accounting detail of the money being spent. And in terms of your question about a lump-sum payment, I think I actually heard two parts to that. One was if there's a possibility of us coming back during the general plan update process and needing more money. And at this point, our intention is no, that we're viewing this request as covering this effort through 2020, which is when the general plan update would be approved. And then the second part that I heard was about how, if, if an amount of money is approved tonight, would that be a lump-sum payment or...
Dispersed, case by case by case.
Dispersed in response to billing from Shute, Mahaly. And I think that's something we can decide on. That can be, both ways, I think, work from our perspective.
My understanding was that the, the problem is that the Ojai area plan is under, is at risk through the revision in the general plan of the county. And that Sea Frog, as a, an organization specializing and focusing on these kinds of problems, recognized this danger and has been talking to everybody inside and outside the city. And that you have identified one of the, if not the top firm, certainly one of the top firms that specialize and understand how these things work. And there is a estimated budget needed to see this through of about $100,000. And the request of the city was to do their part. Now, we're only, you know, four and a half square miles or something in the, in a much larger valley, but we are part of it and we should do our share. The rest of the valley needs to do theirs too, as both privately and through other organizations. And my understanding is there are organizations that are being considered and are considering also helping in this effort to achieve the $100,000 budget. So 25 from the city, 25 from private donations, and 25 from an organization that, whose purpose and goal is also to defend the valley. That's pretty much kind of how it is.
Yes.
So the question is, how do we do this? I guess my suggestion would be that we pledge the 25 as part of this sort of a challenge grant of sorts. And if the other parts come together to make up the $100,000 that, you know, that we pay ours out as, once all the money is committed, the pledges are there, then we do our part. Is that a feasible way to do it or does this make you nervous?
I, so to answer your question, is that feasible? I would say it's feasible.
What I'm getting at is that, you know, it's a question of who, who throws the money in first. If it's 25 and we jump out ahead, as Randy is suggesting, let's, let's get ahead of this, which I think we have a real interest, I don't mean just an interest, but we have a vital interest in doing this. There's nothing more important as far as I'm concerned, except water. Water and air are the vital things for this valley. And this is a danger because there has been for some time, and it's not just a recent thing, people have, from other parts of the county, think we should homogenize the county, one size fits all. And under that guise, they're saying, well, what's wrong? Why should you be special? Well, our situation is different. So I, you know, I am for this, as Randy suggested he was for this, but I don't necessarily want to, you know, throw 25 at it on what needs 100 and we can't actually accomplish the task.
Yeah. I mean, so to be perfectly frank, the challenge grant type thing that you just described is feasible and that's workable. As an executive director of a nonprofit organization that is constantly working to raise money from all sources, right? Individuals and Sea Frog works throughout the county. We are currently pursuing grants locally, statewide, and from national organizations, right? We're a regular grant recipient from Patagonia. We've received funding from the New World Foundation for some of our other lawsuits that were in Upper Ojai. So from a logistic working standpoint, it wouldn't be my preference. So while it's feasible, just to be frank, it's not...
But I'm, I guess I'm in it...
Because then does that mean that it's, that it's totally contingent? Is that what you mean or...
Well, my thought was is that we should, we should leverage this or put some pressure on others to step up too. And I know that's a difficult thing to get everybody doing it, but I, I hear rumors that people are saying that they're interested, just like we said we're interested. How do we bring this together?
I would argue that seeing the commitment of the Ojai City Council throw their hat in would provide great pressure to, in the way that you're speaking of. Versus just a challenge grant that, well, if you guys support this, we'll support it by saying you're going to support it.
But isn't this a specific effort? This isn't, you mean, Sea Frog's been in existence, what did you say, since 2013 or whenever?
2013.
Yeah, and, and I've heard you guys do presentations at the county and other places on specific issues. This is not, the money that, we're being, at least the, the people who are contacting my office are saying, why should the taxpayers of Ojai be spending my money when I don't even agree with you people, you know, or they don't agree with Sea Frog? You probably receive some of the same kind of mail. And I'm thinking, well, okay. The reason why I think that we can do, we should do this is that we need to be doing this through our own staff or through some other group or expert to help us, but we by ourselves can't do it. And so this is a, seems to be a consortium that really makes sense for everybody. I was just trying to, in my usual cautious way when it comes to the money end, is trying to be sure everybody else is in too and we're not just, you know, kind of throwing money into an investment and then we can't complete the deal and it falls out of escrow, so to speak, you know, that, but our money's gone.
Sure. I, I understand that. I mean, that makes sense. That's how I respond to that.
It makes sense, but it's not your preference.
The other thing I wanted to make clear, and I hope it was crystal clear in the written proposal, was that this money is targeted to this effort for the Ojai Valley area plan and that there is a way, as those of you who are attorneys know or who have worked with attorneys, the way they bill, they can split that out and show this was the time spent on Ojai Valley area plan and really track that. And that's part of the accounting that would be provided to track any funding that we would receive from the county for this, so. And to reiterate, just so the public knows too, that we've made that suggestion that your council choose someone, I would assume it would be a council member, but at your discretion, someone to sit on our general plan committee to review and be part of that process as well, so.
Okay. Do we have other people that would like to address this? You want to hang around close by?
Sure.
Yeah, there's a reserved seat there for you.
Yeah, I know it's late. Thank you very much. Yeah, as, you all agree, this is an existential threat that the valley is facing from this general plan review. The arrangement we're asking is pretty similar to the precedent that we've had in the city for quite some time and just more, most recently, when, when Councilman Blatz was mayor. for quite some time and just more, most recently, when Councilman Blatts was mayor. His leadership recognized the threat of the, about five different aggregate mines that were all seeking CUPs, some being granted, all told, we could have had about 1,000 trucks a day come down Highway 33. So the Stop the Trucks Coalition was formed. We made an agreement with the city that was memorializing in a memorandum of understanding that funded our legal fees as the bills came in from Chatten Brown and Carstens or EarthLaw, the city would pay them up to a certain ceiling, I think was also about 20, 25,000. It was a great success and we had really a great victory. Going way back, I was the co-founder and chairman of the board of the Coalition to Stop Weldon Canyon Dump that really dazed us all, but we had a similar agreement when Andy Belknap, that Belknap was city manager at the time, and the city also funded a great deal of our legal expenditures at the time. I'm part of the fundraising committee of SeaFrog along with Robin Gerber. And my weekly effort is substantial in raising money, and I can only say that I'm not going to let this go. This is a big priority, probably the biggest priority I've ever had to face on behalf of the city. Really serious about getting the funds. We're going to get these funds. And I can assure you, we're working night and day to do it. So any, this support would be vital and there are forces out there, COLAB, others, you know what it's about. It's a tough one, but this was a very cynical way of getting the area plan to downgrade our air quality standards so that industrial projects such as oil and gas could come in. That's what it's all about. And we're going to try to, try to stick up to our guns and work to make sure that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. How long has that particular provision of the five pounds of Knox rocks or whatever been in place?
My understanding that it was original in the Ojai Valley Area Plan when it was first created.
But we know what the date is on that? It's okay.
That's when you had a majority of supervisors that believed in it.
Right. I was just wondering how long, because this is, of all times, to go backward, this is not the time.
Thinking it's at least 10 years.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking 2004, but I'm not positive.
Hello, is he?
Hi.
I have a speaker slipping.
My name's Bob Poole. I'm with the Western States Petroleum Association, so I represent the oil industry. I'm also Ventura County resident and very involved in this general plan, 2040 process along with all of the other sectors in the county. It's a very comprehensive, a very well-laid-out process that involves all kinds of opportunities and access points. So when I heard about this request, I went to talk to the county. And maybe this is a better question for your city manager. My understanding is that your planning department hasn't been involved in this at all. They haven't shown up, there hasn't been engagement. And so getting back to the original discussion, that's my question. Why isn't the proper mechanism, the body that's appointed by you all as elected officials and their staff, why aren't they engaged in this as a representative body rather than hire a group that clearly their primary mission is to stop oil production in Ventura County? They've tried 15 CUPs and they're batting zero. Now, that doesn't mean that the county, Kim Prilhart and Brian Baca are in collusion with anybody. There's a board of supervisors, there's a process, there's public hearings. They have not been able to legitimately stand muster with their concerns. That's fine, they'll keep trying. But this is an end-around effort to hire a law firm that specializes in putting initiatives and ordinances on the ballot. They did it in Santa Barbara and they were defeated. They did it in San Benito, they did it in Monterey County. What this is really about is you paying for legal services to circumvent a public process. That's what this is really about. So I would just simply ask you to consider that and ask you to get your planning department staff involved in this first to help make an informed decision and try to address these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Mind out, Russell.
Council members, thank you for all of this work. I almost wasn't going to talk, but tonight we've heard from not one, but two people that are concerned about bringing the petroleum industry closer and closer to us. The first one said, we're not changing anything, we're just going to put a 24/7 flare up in your air shed. Like, that doesn't matter. The flares put out god-awful mix of chemicals. They're very primitive, very nasty things. And unfortunately, the Air Pollution Control District does not even monitor them. I have asked for reports on the flares from them and they told me that if I wanted to know what's happened to the flare production, they would be happy to show me the permits and I could go through the paperwork myself to find out whether or not the flare gases have been increasing. One of the things that I see in what's going on is that the Ojai Valley is part of an air shed. We talk about watersheds a lot, but the predominant winds in this valley blow straight from the Monterey Shale into our basin. And the proliferation of oil wells in the Monterey Shale over the last four or five years has been horrific. All of those wells, that well drilling involves the release of lots of volatile hydrocarbons directly during the well development process. And the flare gas production has been increasing to some extent. I don't know to what extent because the Air Pollution Control District is not tracking it and providing us with reports. But I've been watching these flares since the 60s. They're getting more and more intense and we are downwind from a larger number of them. So when the western petroleum industry comes and says, why would you want to spend money to deal with this issue? The answer is because they're spending a huge amount of money to deal with this issue. So I encourage you to stand your ground and help support the quality of our environment here in the valley. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Russell. Okay, let's see. More cards?
So the Ojai Valley Area Plan was first written in 1990.
Okay, so, seven years?
Anybody else?
Okay. Let's see, is anybody else out there that I may have, I've heard from Michael, we've heard from Bob Poole, we've heard from Kimberly, I guess that's it.
If I could be recognized to begin to walk out on the, on discussion. What really has been an eye-opener for me was to attend some of the general plan update sessions, the last one being the municipal advisory council meeting, where it was stated by the planning staff of the county that there would be no updates of the individual area plans, but that they would be adjusted for consistency and redundancies to, with the overall county general plan, which seemed to me to be code for, we're not going to specifically focus on the diversity of this county as expressed in the area plans, but we may well simply take some things out of those area plans. The other thing that I found troubling was to hear that the Air Quality Management District regards mitigation as countywide without regard to topography. In other words, if there's a, what they look at it thing is if there's an emission source in the Ojai Valley, it could be mitigated by something that happened down at Port Hueneme. In other words, they admitted that they look at the county for mitigation offsets as a flat featureless plain. And so, in general, in answer to the question about why don't we have our planning staff? We're a small city, the planning staff has neither the expertise nor the resources. We already putting a lot of demands on planning staff, to say the least. And I think we have a successful model here for groups with controls, with structure, to pursue the policy goals as expressed by the concerns of our citizens and majority of our, of this council. I noticed that the staff recommendation is to return with a draft agreement and related budget allocation and adjustments. And so I'm ready to make a motion, but I don't want to, I want to give everyone else a chance to speak.
We're going to make a motion.
Okay, well, I'm going to make a motion that we proceed with a recommendation for staff to consider returning with a draft agreement and related budget allocation adjustment for $25,000 in funding to reimburse efforts related to monitoring and participating in the county of Ventura general plan, Ojai area plan updates.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I don't think there's any question, having had dealings with the county, that our five pound per day maximum limit is on their radar screen to get away, to do away with. It's kind of a thorn in their side whenever they're trying to do something that they have to put up with the Ojai plan. And I've heard supervisors say, we should all have the same, we're all Ventura County, we ought to be the same. And they don't really care about any individual characteristics of our valley. So there's no question in my mind, if the county is left unabandoned to just do what they want to do, the five pounds per day is going to go away. I have absolutely no question about that. The second thing is that I am a firm believer that, that government can't do everything with the limited resources that we have. And that a lot of things that need to be done are best supported by government and left to the people that are out there doing it and the volunteer groups, whether that be the arts or whether that be music or whatever it happens to be. We've had excellent luck in supporting individual groups that have the time and have the expertise and have the staff, such as Stop the Trucks, which Michael spoke about, or Ojai Flow, or the Green Coalition. These are organizations that are an extension of us because we help support them, but we couldn't do what they do by ourselves because we just don't have the staff to do it. I think it's a, it's an excellent way for us to spend money in helping to protect our valley. And I'm 100% behind it.
Other, other comments?
I just approve the, you said it so well, thank you very much.
Motion on table, is there a second?
Yeah.
Suzie's seconded it.
Okay.
A second, yeah.
Is, repeat the motion. Are we just giving them direction to come back with it? Or are we making the commitment and then asking them to prepare the documents necessary to carry out the commitment?
Yes. No, the recommendation is to, is to commit the, for $25,000 in funding to reimburse experts related to monitoring and participating with the, accepting the staff recommendation of returning with a draft agreement for us to actually approve.
Do we need to have them come back with a draft agreement for our approval?
Yes, I think so. I think we, I think you want to have a draft agreement for legal reasons.
We could, we could leave that up to the city manager and the city attorney.
City attorney to draft the agreement. I think if we're going to do that, I think if we are going to do that though, I think the motion should include how payment's going to be made to them. Are we going to just give them $25,000? Are they, are we going to pay their legal, the legal fees as presented to us? I think that has some
Isn't that the way it's been done in the past?
Right, and I agree with that. I was thinking that would come out in the agreement.
It will, but if we're going to direct staff to just do it.
I think the agreement should be based on a reimbursement basis.
Right, so we just give that as direction to the city attorney and the city manager?
And I don't think it needs to come back.
Yeah, I don't either. So that is, is that pretty clear on the motion? That what we're doing is we're making the commitment to do it and that the city attorney and the city manager will work out the agreement with the understanding that it'll be on a reimbursement basis.
Understood.
Yes.
I think we might need to come back with a very simple consent counter item just to do the budget appropriation, but we could handle that as a consent item.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll handle that and not bring the agreement back to council for approval, correct?
Except for the consent.
Go through the consent, it would
All we're saying is, is that the decision is being made tonight, the details of the implementation.
Bring the agreement back for final approval to council.
Correct.
Got it.
No?
Did we vote?
I am unclear then, I'm sorry.
What I'm, I'm asking if it's possible. It sounds like the council is unanimously in agreement of doing this and the condition by which it's to be done, you know, forget about that stuff about my challenge grant idea, I'm on the KCLU board, we do that all the time. Right, okay. So what we're saying is, is we're doing this, but we don't, we're not just saying we're going to hand, hand over a check for this. We want the documented expenditure for this project and we'll reimburse it in a timely way.
Right.
We're just asking the attorney and, or our manager to craft up the agreement
And execute it.
To, yeah, to execute it with the
Come back with it and wrap it into a budget amendment in the future.
Right, I was going to say, and their response was to put it through the consent process versus bringing it to a full council discussion.
Well, but it is a full
Right.
It is, yeah, right.
I don't think we need to see the agreement.
As I understand it, then it would be, the consent item would solely be the budget adjustment.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
The agreement would already have been executed by that.
Exactly.
Correct, yes.
Right. We have enough things that we just keep bringing back and keep bringing back.
Understood. Just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, we are, as soon as we get sure we're what we're voting on. So everybody feel like they're clear with this?
Yeah.
Most importantly, our city manager and our city attorney understand?
We're clear.
Okay, call the roll.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay. The regular agenda is done. We have trailing, I guess, one or two items for next meeting.
Right, and we didn't get to the item on the commission and board's composition, so we can bring that back to a future date.
But Mayor, we did well.
Okay, now we have a closed session, is that right?
What about, what about council?
Should we front end that, what we, what we didn't get done, put it on the next agenda, but put it on the front end?
Absolutely, I think, yeah.
What do you wait?
And we announced that at the beginning of the meeting that we were going to have that as a problem.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we, what Randy says is what we agreed to on the last item. Trail like this, it'll be the first on the next agenda?
Understood.
When do we do, are we doing, going around council for future items?
The closed session before You what?
Are we having a closed session?
On that, okay, well, that's what we need to clarify. Randy had in a thought that rather than trailing our meetings with this, what if we hold the closed session, does it have to close session before the next?
And call the meeting early?
And call the meeting early.
Call them, I agree.
Right.
Can we do that, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Manager, can we
Yeah, absolutely.
Build it that way?
Maybe an hour early.
Sure.
So the meeting, yeah.
I was trying to think if we have a joint meeting on the 8th, I don't believe we do, so.
The 6th.
On August 8th?
I don't think so.
Let's start at 6 and do the evaluation then.
I don't know. Sorry. Yeah, we have no joint meeting, we can schedule the closed session at 6:00 PM.
Our minds will be fresh.
I don't know if my mind will ever be fresh again.
Or you get us first, I don't know if that's what you want. You want us
I see my old coffee buddy Hank out there and call him Scott, simply because he belongs to the same club I do with the bald head and, oh, Mr. Ick.
Mayor Johnston, do we want to go through city manager reports and council member reports?
Yeah, sure.
I just thought he might, he might have something he wants to say to us.
Okay. City manager, you want to?
Thank you, I have a couple of quick things that I'll quickly, I have a script, so will keep, keep me short here. Just a couple of updates regarding leaf blower. We did resume leaf blower enforcement on July 1st and we have posted information on the webpage, Facebook page, and other locations about the resumed enforcement and specifically what the rules are. Flyer has been made available in both English and Spanish and clarifies when and where leaf blowers may be operated within the city of Ojai. And I won't get into reading all the details on that because we have provided a copy of that to you and you can pull that up on the city's website if you'd like. But again, I would encourage folks to visit the city's webpage if they would like more information. We also recently tested some battery-powered, commercial-grade landscaping tools and mowers as part of a grant demonstration that was coordinated by Dan Mobby of the American Green Zone Alliance. So just again, if folks do have concerns about leaf blowers, since we are, we have resumed enforcement, they can file that complaint with the city hall and we will follow up with it. Also want to give an update on what's happening with short-term rentals. There was a, do appreciate the article that was published in the Ojai Valley News. I do think, hard to take really issue with the headline. It sounds somewhat negative, but I think it's an accurate statement in terms of our results. I think we've actually done very well with the tools that we have been given in terms of enforcement. And of course, our main avenues for enforcement have been focusing on the advertising, which I understand is only, you know, it's only one way which I understand is only, you know, it's only one way to address the enforcement. But I think it has been very effective, and I think whenever you talk about enforcement, you have to think about in terms of how it changes and affects people's behavior. And I can tell you almost right off the bat, when the city began enforcing the ads online, that folks started to change their behavior. They started to come up with ways to try and hide it, or sneak around it, or just not advertising as blatantly as they had in the, in the past, that it was available for short-term rentals. So, again, I, I think the success there is that we've made it more difficult for folks to advertise and be able to, to book these. Our challenges still lie in terms of being able to go after properties that we suspect may be offenders, based on anecdotal evidence or, or citizen complaints, simply because it's, it's challenging for the city to be able to draw a clear case, to lead to a citation, and be able to hold that up, when we don't have any specific direct testimony from the people that have stayed there, if we don't have any evidence of, of any money being exchanged. In other words, it's very difficult for us just to simply be able to cite and pursue based on observations of a large number of cars that were at a property, or every other weekend there seems to be new cars at the property. While that certainly is indication that there may be something going on there, and something that we're certainly interested in, and we'll see if we can follow up on, again, the ability is to have the, the evidence to actually be able to issue a citation in good faith that we know will hold up. But back to my little narrative here, we did, the story did note that 59 properties have been advertised as short-term rentals, and those have either been removed or modified and are longer being advertised as short-term rentals. City is currently working with 24 additional properties to obtain compliance. There are fewer short-term rentals available online, but there are questions in terms of the impact that this is having on housing affordability in the community. Article also correctly noted the city has spent approximately $40,000 to date on enforcement, on enforcement costs, and has issued about $38,000 in citations, and has collected $16,500 in citation revenue. So, we have been able to get some of that back. Story also included information on the settlement on one of the city's most significant STR issues or cases to date, and this was a property on the Cuyahoga Street that had been cited and fined for $11,000 for advertising Six Rooms for Four Day Retreat. Following an administrative hearing and negotiations, the property owner did pay a $5,500 settlement. They have now listed the property for sale, recorded a deed restriction on the property to put future buyers on notice, and agreed to allow the city to inspect the property and provide information on demand. So, we are working to, again, to pursue this effort, and I think we've done very well with the tools that we have. But at this point, to be able to say that we've been able to really achieve complete success in the enforcement, I cannot make that statement. Again, I think we've done very well with what we have, but we're limited with the tools that we have. So, part of that would be, my, my pitch then to council would be, if council is desirous of trying to move the enforcement in a further direction, or do additional enforcement, or somehow tighten the net here, if that's the direction that council would like to go, then I would recommend that we start having discussions about additional tools in the toolbox for city staff to use. Or, we can simply continue on as we have been, because I do feel like, that we have been effective at addressing it from the advertising standpoint, which does affect the ability of the property owners to get these things rented, and obviously, if they're not getting it rented as often, that affects their bottom line, and affects their, the ultimate financial viability of what they're trying to do. Happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Johnston? I just, do you feel you, that staff is exhausted, are the city attorney's office working with staff, your staff is exhausted, the, the possibilities of, of, of the internet investigation tools for finding advertising? Are there some, in other words, rather than passing new text amendments to the code?
Right.
Is there a need to fund some better penetration, if you will, or better exploration of the, of the, of the cyber world to find these advertisements? Do we feel we're doing a pretty good job of identifying, and we have the tools we need for that?
I think we are, and of course, it reminds me of the Rumsfeld quote there, you know, it's the, the knowns and the unknowns. I mean, we think we are, we think we are based on what we're seeing, and, and the, you know, some of the anecdotal evidence, as well as some of the feedback that we're getting from the community. But, so I, I really think we're, I think we've maxed that out as, about as much as we can in-house, and I don't know that a going in-house would, would yield much more.
Okay, Randy?
Complaints are up or, up or complaints are down?
Um, you know, I always say complaints are down. Most of what we're pursuing, we're pursuing, you know, through our own leads that we're finding through the internet, and, I don't have a number in front of me here, but that's, that's the, yeah.
And, and then I have one other tool to throw in your toolbox, is drive around on Tuesdays, and you're going to see trash cans left out on vacation rental sites because the homeowners aren't there.
Right.
And the users take it out as part of their obligation to keep a clean site, so just put that in your toolbox.
Okay.
I won't say where, but I'm just going to say, I see them.
Mayor Johnston, I'd like to, I just really want to wind up by saying a couple things. First of all, compliment the, our chief here on something I've observed, very positive. I just, I felt I had to say it for the record. I observed a couple of your deputies handling some very difficult behaviors from substance abusers in the Plaza Lawn area the other day. I understand it's an ongoing problem, it's a problem you have to handle with a lot of sensitivity and the right amount of firmness, but it seemed like they were handling it a very difficult situation in terms of the individuals involved, who I'm sure you well know who they are, but with a lot of professionalism and skill. And I know that there's concern by the business people in the area, but they also appreciate what they observe in terms of the, your deputies.
Thank you very much for that. I know that, it's a, it's a delicate balance, as you know, working with our vulnerable population that's out there. There are limited tools for even what law enforcement can do, and they are players that we're very familiar with, and as a result, we have a, a mutual relationship with them, and we try and get them to comply. Catch more flies with honey, right?
Mixed, mixed results sometimes, but.
Absolutely.
I do really wanted to feel like I had to compliment it. They, they obviously were handling the things, I couldn't say how they could have handled it any better. I just really want, felt like I needed to say that.
Thank you very much.
Can I go?
Just one very quick thing, the council wanted an update and information on the community development director recruitment, so if I could just pass that down, this is the, the timeline on that, so happy to answer any questions.
Suzie, you want to do?
Yes, yes. Okay, so, maybe Randy, and Bill, and Paul, you could help me with this, because I wasn't on the council. But I watched the, all, all the tiny house hearings on YouTube that took place last year, and it's my understanding that where it was left off, and Matt, you can maybe help me too, I want to direct staff to re-agendize tiny houses on the planning commission agenda, preferably the first week in October. So, my understanding is that we're going to get the minutes, the minutes will show that, that, are you listening to make sure I'm getting it right? Okay, the planning commission and city council at that meeting decided that they would wait until the planning commission was finished with the accessory dwelling units, and then they would take up the tiny houses again. That's my understanding of the minutes from that meeting. And, and council member Haney has requested Amber to provide those minutes, but we don't have them yet. So, is there anything else I need to do?
I mean, the council has, the council has, certainly has the power to, regardless of what direction was provided at the prior meeting.
Okay.
Now, in this moment, to direct the planning commission to evaluate tiny houses as a future agenda item.
Yes, well, that's what I would like to have.
And you've made that request?
Yeah, I made that request.
Concurrent by one more, and then it would be on the PCE agenda.
I think we all concur.
Okay.
Is that to come back here, or to go to planning?
Planning.
I understand it to go to planning first, to look at the issues, and then come to council perhaps with a proposal, a term sheet perhaps.
Yes, yes.
Formal orders to be developed after there's, by and by the council on the policy choices at issue.
Okay, is that, is that a formal action that we take to direct something to another commission, or do we put that on the agenda to make that?
Oh, I see your question. I think you could do it, you do it either way.
I think we could do it this way, just at this moment, because we're really picking up on, on an item that was already in process.
We're all in agreement, I'm just letting this.
Okay, so you're just asking them to, to proceed with what they said they would do? Is that what?
Yes, but, but, and the reason for the, for, for the date is the planning commissioner, Chester, he's going to be gone part of September, so that's why, and the first week of October would be good in case there's, you know, issue of continuation.
As I under, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, I think the mayor raised a good point. If this was previous direction, staff will make sure that the direction gets followed. No need for council action, as I understand it.
Thank you for the clarification on that. With that, it wouldn't be taking action on something not on your agenda, it's scheduling prior, prior direction to do something.
Nudging.
Nudging a lot, indeed.
Did you have something else you wanted?
Yeah, if we, if we, the, if we want to do some kind of tribute to David Mason, how do, how do we, I know we, we still have in the works for Patricia Weinberg, but do I put that on the agenda, or does it go to, just later?
The stuff we got on agendas, I think everybody's in agreement, we should do, do something, and I have had people contacting me with wanting to meet and, and share their ideas, so if you would like to volunteer to be part of that, I would be happy to.
You can, you can handle it, yeah.
To share that with, for both. There is a, a small tasteful monument to Zelma Wilson. I don't know if you all remember Zelma, but she, the architect.
Who she is.
That was one of the, the key people when we tried to save the downtown and designed the plaza. Anyway, it's at, it's at Libby Park, it's just a nice, small, little thing there where the garden club has put it in, and, you know, that might be a nice place, because David and Zelma and Pat.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe together again, in the garden.
I look forward to proposal. I look forward to proposal.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, I have just a couple of things. One, I guess Greg, bless his soul, he's going on vacation, and we're giving him extra stuff to do, but he's prepared a letter on behalf of the city back to APCD. There was this demonstration where they brought in the equipment and went to all the places, mowed all the grass, I think some of you were, were out there. Anyway, he's, he's contacting back to APCD. There's still money kind of earmarked for us, and what we've asked them to do is to say that in general, the city would like to be a demonstration for this, but we need to see the detail, and ask them to write up a, a proposal to us saying what it would all include, based on the conversations we've had. So, that's kind of moving along, and we're hoping by fall that they're willing in effect to buy all our old equipment and provide us with a $60,000 budget for the new stuff, understanding that you, we have a lot of trees, and big trees going down can't be taken down with little.
That's right.
Yeah, so, everybody seems to be getting more in tune with what we're doing. Okay, that's point one. Two, to the sheriff's office, just a question on policy. I noticed today, and this may go along with what Bill was saying about handling difficult clients in the field, it was right at the intersection of Signal and Matilah, there by the parking lot, that there were two cars there, and the officers clearly had command presence and everything under control. The only question I have of you is that, is there a policy, once somebody is put into cuffs, how fast we get them inside the vehicle and get them out of public sight, so that it, now, maybe this person was, I don't know, drunk in a public place, or substance abuse, or whatever it was, they, they appeared to be a little bit disoriented. But my thought was, is people came up to me and said, "What's going on? It's a tourist attraction. We have two cars, and two sizable guys, and a citizen, not frog walking, but, you know, in cuffs." And I was just thinking that if, if we don't have that as a policy to kind of get them in as quickly and out of, so that it's not a sort of a humiliation.
Yeah, so there's no written policy on it, but generally, we don't like to have a spectacle either, right? So, if somebody was not immediately put into a vehicle, it could be that they needed medical attention, so we're waiting for an ambulance to show up, and sticking them in a car isn't always the best thing, if they, if they claim that they've fallen and have some type of injury. So, it's not uncommon at all for us to contact and summon an ambulance or fire personnel to come and do an assessment before we transport them to the jail. But by a matter of just decency, we don't leave people on display in handcuffs for show. We want them in the car as quickly as anybody to get them out of here.
Yeah, okay, good. I, I didn't think they were wanting to do it for show, but I was thinking, another little nudge, I'm saying that sooner the better.
Yeah, no, and we agree, it's sooner, it's better for us also. The longer somebody sits there, the more opportunities they have to try and flee, even in handcuffs, you know, fight or resist or have, or start to have medical problems. So, it's in our, everybody's best interest to get them in a car as quickly as possible.
Okay, great, thanks.
No worries.
Okay, so I guess we're done here?
Yep.
Is that what they say? Are we done here?
Just one thing, I previewed this movie, that's showing this on Saturday.
The Cat?
Yeah, The Cat, The Change in America. It is fabulous, it's being shown in many towns, and it's just, it's really.
Four o'clock, four thirty.
Four thirty, yeah. And we have a great panel, and I want to really encourage you.
Just think, we'll have a, a movie theater pretty soon to show then.
Okay, so the meeting is adjourned, and we will, to six o'clock, what's that, on the 8th?
Correct, August 8th.
Well, or whenever it is.
August 8th.
August 8th, okay.
Yes, 6:00 PM, thank you.
Okay, meeting stands adjourned.